We're starting off with the first business meeting of the newest 30th session of the Trumbull Town Council. Would everybody kindly rise for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance?
Please call the roll.
Mike Buswell.
Here.
Mary Isaac.
Here.
Eric Story.
Here.
Bill Mecca.
Here.
Ann Sather.
Here.
Jennifer Winchell.
Here.
Veronica Lenzen.
Here.
Richard Wolf.
Here.
Jason Marsh.
Here.
Anthony Dorsey.
Here.
Ashley Godiano.
Here.
Carl Massaro.
Here.
John Foreman.
Here.
Joe Pifko.
Here.
Scott Wick.
Here.
Joy Cologne.
Here.
Steve O'Moyn.
Here.
Kelly Malazi.
Here.
Tony Sinto.
Here.
Kevin Shiley.
Here.
And Nicole Adams.
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum and full attendance this evening. Just so the public knows, there's an array of council names in front of me. Those are council members who are participating by phone for personal reasons. So we do have 21 members in attendance this evening. Several of us, council people, are new, newly elected. Let me try speaking in the phone. Is that a little into the mic? Is that better? Okay. Sorry about that. We do have several new members who were elected this last term. Eric Story from District One, who is one of the attendees on the phone. From District Two, we have Ann Sather and Jennifer Winchell. And from District Three, we have Richard Wolf. From District Five, we have John Foreman and Scott Wick. Welcome back. And I think that's it on new folks. So welcome and good luck. We'll all be working very industriously for our residents and businesses here in Trumbull. Next on the agenda is public comment, and I do have the sign-up sheet. Just a reminder, under our council rules, your comments are limited to items that are on the agenda this evening. So we have several people on the list, so we ask you to keep your remarks as concise as possible, as we have a fairly large agenda. First person is Kate Ludke. Can you, just when you come up, please state your name and address.
Okay. I'm Kate Ludke. I live at 216 Churchill Road. I'm speaking on behalf of the seniors/community center. First off, I'd like to thank you all for volunteering your time to help benefit Trumbull, so thank you very much for that. I would like to speak against the proposal for the community center at Hardy Lane. When this area was proposed, neighbors in the area slowly found out through word of mouth only. There was never any direct communication with neighboring homeowners that would be directly affected by this proposal. As many of us has joined the process, it first was stated that we should feel fortunate to have easy access to the community center. However, as citizens that live on this main road, we share many of our concerns that you will hear this evening. One big focus I had was the traffic on Churchill Road. During this process, we kept asking for a traffic study to be done. It was the very last thing that was eventually done, which my neighbors and I knew placing a building of this size in this location would increase the traffic on an already very hectic and dangerous street. The study recommended widening the road on the local properties on Churchill Road to make a double lane. This is going to create hazardous situations for my neighbors when trying to come and go from our driveways, as well as reducing the value of our properties due to the close proximity to the main road, making our homes undesirable for resale value. Many of my neighbors have a one-lane driveway and do not have the ability to expand it. This means they will either have to either back in or back out of their driveway. This will be incredibly dangerous with extra lanes and additional traffic. We are asking you to take these items into consideration when discussing this proposal as fellow Trumbull citizens. We love our homes. My neighbors and I put a lot of love and care into our homes. This will hurt us and our investments. This is not the right location for this proposal. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Ludke. Yes, we'll give it to the clerk. It's okay. Thank you. Next to speak is Jeff Alterman.
Thank you. I'm going to speak about the funds for the stadium renovation at Trumbull High School. My name is Jeff Alterman. I'm the Vice President of the Trumbull Touchdown Club. I'm also the football team's radio and TV broadcaster, as well as broadcasting a variety of Trumbull High and Hillcrest sporting events. We are asking for your support for the renovation of Trumbull High's McDougal Field. I've been an active member of the football team for 21 years, and our current facility is already getting worn out and showing its age. Our turf is at or beyond its useful life, which creates a safety hazard for our student athletes, the visiting team's student athletes, and all of the programs that utilize our facility. A few years ago, a football game was played in rainy conditions, and the windows in the press box had so much fog and water between the panes of glass that the entire game operations team, including the P.A. announcer, broadcast team, scoreboard operator, and so many more, cannot see what was clearly happening on the field. Broadcasting games is something that many FCAC teams are doing today, and something that I absolutely love doing with the Trumbull Athletic Program. The students and their families enjoy the service provided to them when they can't attend the games and events, but our current setup at McDougal Stadium barely provides the space for us to continue to do this, and expanding our broadcast capabilities for the students is nearly impossible right now. We want to provide opportunities to our students to gain this experience and give them this opportunity. It's time to improve the overall safety and provide a facelift for McDougal Stadium, which has the ability to be brought up to 2024 standards. This renovation would be a huge improvement, not only for our Trumbull High players, but to our Trumbull youth programs and others who use the field. It represents our town and is significant to the community. Updating to a more modern stadium would bring a sense of pride and town spirit when other teams visit and when hosting playoff and state championship games. On behalf of our football family, thank you for your time, and we hope to have your support with the renovation of McDougal Stadium.
Thank you, Mr. Alterman. Next up is Benjamin Strong.
Good evening and thank you. My name is Benjamin Strong, and I'm here on behalf of the Trumbull High School Golden Eagle Marching Band. I'm a parent of a sophomore percussionist, and I'm here to support the proposal to renovate McDougal Stadium. While the stadium provides countless opportunities for sports, it also serves as a venue for the Trumbull High School Band. Each September, Trumbull hosts one of the most prominent band competitions in the region, and in 2023, 13 bands with nearly 1,000 performers participated in our Fall Classic with more than 1,200 spectators. The success of the Trumbull Band can be tied directly to the quality of the facilities. Our performers spend countless hours practicing and marching on the field. Trumbull High School is widely regarded as the premier host by U.S. Bands, the governing body of high school bands. We are also negotiating with the United States Marine Corps Band to perform at our 2024 Fall Classic. Competition includes the arts, and the proposed improvement to McDougal Stadium will positively impact approximately thousands of students, improving the Trumbull High School Golden Eagle Marching Band performances and competitions, and improve the spectator experience. Specifically, these improvements will ensure that the Trumbull High School Marching Band can continue to provide the quality program for which it is known. Data collected by the National Association for Music Education indicates that music students are less likely to be truant, less likely to be involved with drugs and alcohol, more likely to graduate on time, and have higher SAT scores than their peers. The arts are equally as important as our tremendous sports programs. The Trumbull Band has experienced incredible support from the school, the administrators, the Board of Education, and our entire Trumbull community. I will add one other caveat to this, and I'm also the father of a Special Olympian, and our Special Olympians also use the Trumbull field and track, and the improvements there will ensure our Special Olympians will be able to continue to compete safely. I am very thankful for this opportunity and strongly encourage you to approve the McDougal Stadium proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Strong. Next is George Boyen.
Good evening. My name is George Bowman, 10 Glen Arden Road, Trumbull, Connecticut. I'm the proud resident for almost 25 years and have five children. Our family is deeply connected to the Trumbull Public School system. I have two graduates from the high school and two more within the educational system. As a high school and college athlete, I understand the pivotal role competitive athletics form in the molding of our students and the future of our student athletes. Today, I want to highlight the importance of upgrading McDougal Stadium and steering our choices towards an informed and visionary future. Reflecting on past decisions like the refurbishing of the Hillcrest Pool, instead of investing in a new aquatics center underscores the wisdom of looking ahead. Elevating McDougal Stadium to a state-of-an-art facility will position it as a central point for our community. My two high school daughters actively participate in field hockey and lacrosse, competing in the fiercely competitive FCAC Conference. Numerous schools in the conference are ranked nationwide, offering a tremendous opportunity for Trumbull. Enhancing McDougal Stadium will empower us to host more top-tier events. Were you aware that the Sacred Heart University's field hockey team does not use their own facilities for their own games? They travel up to the facilities of Yale Field Hockey due to their turf selection. Let's not merely invest in the present, let's invest in the future where McDougal Stadium stands as a symbol of excellence, a hub not only for sports but also for community pride. Together, we can create a legacy to resonate for generations. Thank you for your consideration of approving McDougal Stadium.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman. Next is Richard White.
Richard White, 169 Churchill Road. This evening, the Town Council's Community Facilities Building Committee will give you their final report with the recommendation for development of a 30,000-square-foot senior and community center at Hardy Lane. You'll also be voting to add additional members to the committee. For both environmental and traffic reasons, the Town Council should reject the committee's report recommending development at Hardy Lane. Instead, you should instruct your building committee to refocus the siting of this project to an existing town facility, as well as work with our economic development staff to look for suitable vacant office or retail space. Neither of these options have been fully explored to date. As for Hardy Lane, you should instruct your Conservation Commission to apply for environmental cleanup grants to mitigate the contaminated and polluted fill found at Hardy Lane, with the goal of greatly improving the quality of our Quonic River watershed rather than developing the property. If this Town Council intends to push forward with the Hardy Lane option, the following tasks ought to be completed by the committee before any truly informed recommendation or vote can take place. Provide the requested CAD or other vector drawings of the current site plan, including the building footprint, widened roadway, parking areas, driveways, and sidewalks. Conduct the recommended Phase III environmental site assessment. Actually, I just learned tonight that it's not being recommended. Conduct an environmental impact statement regarding the Quonic River watershed. Hold a formal wetlands hearing of the Inland Wetlands and Water Course Commission. Receive Connecticut Department of Transportation approval for the pedestrian crosswalk, turning lane along Churchill Road, and widening of Hardy Lane Road. Receive Town of Trumbull Fire Marshal approval for the parking, driveway, and sidewalk areas, especially with regard to allowing overflow parking along the driveway and no second entrance, driveway entrance. Commission a peer review of the building committee's traffic study. Notify all abutters of the property, especially those properties where the town or state will be exercising their right of way associated with the needed roadway changes. Provide an operational cost estimate for the first two years of operations, including the physical plant as well as staffing. Allow the new members of the committee time to review the committee's work to date. The document being presented by the building committee this evening is by no means complete enough for you to vote on. Significant questions that affect the environment, traffic, and final costs have been left dangling with a carefree "we'll worry about that later" attitude. It's important to note also that this project will be competing in the public voting arena with much-needed and overdue updates to our schools. Our Board of Education has done exemplary job, including in informing the public with their 10-year district master plan. We should be holding this building committee to an equally high standard. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. White. Next speaker is Caroline DePantholus.
Hello. My name is Caroline DePantholus. I'm a dual varsity athlete here today, representing the Trumbull Girls Lacrosse and Field Hockey Teams, advocating for our need of a new turf field and track. The safety of our school's athletes should be a top priority. Having a track and field that is not properly maintained is a hazard for all THS athletes. Sports injuries can happen at any time and place, but on a field that is not properly maintained, those injuries will surely increase. Also, it is important to remember how many people will use this field. Many THS students are a part of sports that use track and field, along with youth sports teams. I'm also here advocating for the inclusion of the wall in the budget. This is a crucial thing for many sports teams' advancements, including lacrosse. Competing in the nationally-ranked lacrosse program of Fairfield County is hard enough. This could help generations of Trumbull lacrosse players and set the program on a well-needed fast track to improvement. I know the budget is always stretched thin, but again, keeping the safety of our athletes should be a top priority. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Pantholus. Next speaker is Chris Pettenella.
Hello. My name is Chris Pettenella, 69 Old Churchill Road. I'm expressing the facts about the industrialization Hardy Lane is about to face. The damage the property will face will irreversibly alter the area's natural surroundings. This will lead to the destruction of local ecosystems, including the displacement of wildlife and the degradation of landscape. Today, I advocate for the protection of Hardy Lane's unique and natural features and hope that future generations like I'm a part of can continue to appreciate the Quonic River Valley's natural beauty. This land can never be put back. The industrialization of Hardy Lane will progress, progress, sorry, negative impacts on the well-being of Trumbull residents. Let me name a few things. Noise pollution, air pollution, and traffic congestion on one of the worst blind curves in Trumbull. Just up the road, where Quality meets Churchill, is one of the most dangerous intersections. No light, even after multiple accidents, including fatal injuries. Not to mention the amount of traffic the area already faces. This would diminish the quality of life for us living in this area. This is the same town that says, "Let's go green and let's protect the environment." Yet there's hundreds of tires sitting in Trumbull parks legally. This is the same town that's going to brutally rip down our local wildlife's homes, our woods. This is the same town that uses your taxpayer money to build things we do not need. For example, we need schools. Our schools are busting at the seams. This is one great example of something we can put our funds to use for. This is the same town that's using your money against you. Now they're pushing for the biggest mistake in Trumbull history: industrializing the whole town. This is a small step for Trumbull's future plan on becoming a city like our neighbor, Bridgeport. I prioritize health and safety while also yearning to preserve a peaceful and serene ecosystem. That's why it's extremely easy to see, and I emphasize the importance of maintaining the Trumbull town-like feel. The industrialization of Hardy Lane will disrupt and destroy the nature of the neighborhood, the land that Trumbull once protected, land that needs to be preserved. This will lead to the loss of community members and environmental ecosystems. Hardy Lane residents and surrounding areas have spoken out against the building plans. Our first elect woman recently said she wants the people of Trumbull to have decisions in major areas and have a say. Do we not have a say? Do our residents of Hardy Lane not have a say? We have already spoken, but very obviously our verses apparently do not matter. This choice reflects on the town's commitment to prioritizing environmental preservation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pettenella. Next to speak is Rodney Arganies.
Good evening. Rodney Arganies, 23 Glenbrook Road. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of the renovation of McDougal Stadium. I understand that the monies that have been discussed and allocated by the Board of Finance are sufficient enough to cover the turf, the drainage, and the track. However, there was a portion of the money that was taken off, which would essentially cover fencing, paving, as well as a wall that is called a lacrosse wall, but quite frankly could be used for any round ball. I just wanted to point out the fact that the current fencing and asphalt, as far as I know, has been there since the field was constructed in 1974. So looking at it from an ROI standpoint, if we're able to get that same amount of money and that same amount of time for that $800,000, you're looking at about $16,000 a year. And this includes the wall. I just want to speak tonight and say, please, for the sake of our athletics program and our educational system here, see this project through the right way the first time. I'd also like to point out the fact that, at the moment, a situation that our lacrosse players have as far as a wall to utilize, which they do to practice their passing and catching, is somewhat precarious. The wall is perpendicular to a street that's on campus, and it definitely poses a safety concern. You know, as the head coach of our team, our boys team, it's something that I think about quite often. This would immediately resolve any of those thoughts or concerns, keep our players safe, and give them a fantastic facility to practice on. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Arganies. Next is Alexander Wright.
Hello, everyone. I'm a, I'm a, my name is Alexander Wright. I live at 1925 Huntington Turnpike. I'm a rising senior at Trumbull High, and I'm entering my second year as captain of the lacrosse team. I have come to, come here to speak to you today about the renovation of the McDougal Field, and more specifically, the lacrosse wall. I come from a family of dedicated lacrosse players, and with that, wall ball has been a part of my routine ever since I could hold a stick. I hope that amongst you, there is at least one person who shares my love of the sport and could share to your peers the importance of having a wall to practice on. The experience gained through practicing on a wall specifically cannot be replicated by any other drill in the sport. At every level of play, from U8 Lightning to collegiate and professional, wall ball is on the practice plan. Operating without it would be comparable to withholding a bar to vault over from the track and field team. My coaches highlighted for you the various safety concerns and flaws with our current setup. We're using the wall of the side of the school. Where players are in danger of being hit after they miss catches, and there's the possibility that we ding parked cars and passing drivers as they go by. We understand that bringing this up today gives us two choices. We can either keep quiet and continue to practice in our unsafe location, or we can voice our request for funding a new dedicated wall in a safe location to be added back to the budget. But in doing this, we risk that now we might be banned from using this spot as a monetarily efficient solution. I stand along with my coach and my team to say that the construction of a newly dedicated wall ball location is the only logical and safe option. Please display your support and for current and future youth sports in Trumbull by adding it back into our budget plans. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Next to speak is Jeff Pace.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Pace, and I live at 213 Churchill Road. My house is the house that's next to the vacant wooden lot on the corner of Hardy and Churchill. I just wanted to share the same concerns as the previous speakers have spoken about, same type of issues regarding the traffic on Churchill Road. It is already an overwhelming road with traffic, and I think the addition to the community being put down in Hardy Lane would only contribute to more hazardous traffic on the road and be very dangerous, and also for people who live in the area to be able to get out of their driveways. I also share concerns with the other speakers regarding the environmental issues that would happen with the construction of the new facility. I just think that there were other places that this could have been put at, and also as far as the expense of it, I believe that there are other issues in Trumbull that need to be taken care of before we build a facility of this size and at this cost. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pace. Our next speaker is Marie Monk.
Hello. I first had a letter that my neighbors had asked that I read for them since they were not able to attend tonight. This is from Sarah and George Pinto of 237 Churchill Road. Good evening, Town of Trumbull representatives. Over the last couple of years, my neighbors and us have been trying to voice our concerns against the development of the community center over and over again, yet it seems like we are not being heard. We have valid traffic, safety, and environmental concerns, and we have all provided personal testimony over and over, and every time we feel we do this, we are met with a brick wall and a new meeting to talk about the proposition of continuing the potential development. Why must you impinge upon a neighborhood that was supposed to be protected? Many of our neighbors' homes were established in the '40s and '50s, our homes included at 237 Churchill Road. In our 10 years in this town, in this home, with the development of Trumbull Center, the traffic has become insane. Just a few days ago, taking a left out of my driveway south of Churchill Road took four minutes as the traffic did not stop coming up the hill at prime hour of 4:00 to 5:00 p.m. It's like we play chicken with the road every day. We have witnessed and helped with four accidents in front of our house alone. The safety and security of our family and neighbors is most important. How can a development like this be any good for the environment and the river valley at Trumbull, trying to protect, and the river valley that Trumbull was trying to protect and have flourish? With the development, we lose more natural habitat, pushing the large wildlife in and risk damaging the Pequannot River Valley. Why are these discussions not announced and neighbors directly notified? We feel we're, we feel like we're always hearing of these talks through the grapevine and last-minute texts. We come to Trumbull with the promise that nothing would be developed in our backyard, yet here we are on a continuous basis, fighting for our preserved natural valley and preventing this insanity of Churchill Road from becoming worse than it already is. Please hear us out and do not move forward with this project. Please improve our schools first. Please look into renting properties that are already built and into alternatives. We do not want this to be built. And then, again, I'm representing myself and my husband, Michael and Marie Monks, at 232 Churchill Road. Good evening, Trumbull Town Council. Thank you for your time. You've had the opportunity to hear some of the concerns from Trumbull residents regarding the community center. I know time is short, but I would like to repeat some of the concerns. Having been a high school teacher for 19 years, I know that repeating yourself is often very helpful in making sure you've been heard, and many of us feel that we have not been heard and we've been ignored throughout, with our concerns here. Living on Churchill Road for over 15 years, our mailbox has been hit by a car four to five times. We're honestly starting to lose track. We've never filed a police report because cars always took off, but we have had our neighbors as witnesses. My point is people drive pretty crazy on Churchill Road, and any increase in traffic in that area in particular is a huge concern of ours. My other concern is the replacement of more green space with buildings and parking lots and the impact of the water runoff so close to the trail and the river. Just the other day, after one of the heavy rainfalls, I drove by Twin Brooks and saw the river overflow was almost up to the playground. I have a very deep concern about the environmental impact any development would have at this location, and we have asked many times before, we ask again, please find another location for this development. And just a side note, it sounds like the funds would be better allocated for the athletics project rather than this community center.
Thank you, Mrs. Monk. Next up is Cindy Pankoff.
Good evening. First, I'd like to congratulate and thank all of you.
First, I'd like to congratulate and thank all of you for running to do this and do it as often as you will be doing it over the next two years and listening to us. I was going to apologize for speaking on this subject yet again, but we just heard from a high school teacher that repeating yourself actually gets heard. Let's hope that that is what happens this time. Tonight, you'll be getting an update regarding what is supposed to be a new senior center. While receiving that update, I want you to have other thoughts on the location being put forth as well as the design. The responsibility of every elected official, board, commission and committee, written or unwritten, is to do what is best for the residents and taxpayers and the future of our town. This is over and above your charge and should be the foundation for every decision made, especially when it comes to needs versus wants. If you push this recommendation through, you will fail all of them. Simply saying, saying, "Let the people decide" does not clear you of making responsible decisions to present to them. You must do your job first, presenting an appropriate location. I've been saying for 15 years, we need a new senior center, but the ruining of a residential neighborhood and destroying the home values of that neighborhood to do so is not serving all the community. It is not helping the thousands of people that drive that already overwhelmed corridor. It is not going to, it is going to put more stress on an already aging water and sewer system, and it will be utilizing a property that was supposed to be saved from the, from dense development, or at least that was the excuse the administration used to acquire it. While this committee and the administration continue to say, "The people will decide," one has to wonder if they will truly get all of the information to make an educated decision, which also includes the necessary bonding that will be going, that we are going to be facing, the needs versus the wants. This in school, includes schools, bonding wishes that were recently applied for, and all of the bonding that is coming through that you will see tonight. Trumbull has a tremendous number of needs, and there are other options that do not include destroying a neighborhood, and you can do so by killing two birds with one stone. They just don't want to. They've dug their heels in. Anyone paying attention to the details of these meetings is keenly aware of that. Because Hardy Lane is not the only option. It was their dream option, and it is not the best option unless the goal is to build something that is not a senior center and don't, you don't care about the surrounding neighbors' traffic. Richard White has done an extensive research on this property, and he has been ignored up until this point. The family that lives on the street was lied to when they were asked, when they asked the first selectmen directly what the plan for the property was. They were told they were talking about planting more trees there. In reality, this project would be building right on top of their home. If destroying a residential neighborhood is not enough reason to decline this location, how about just not being suitable for any building of this type, according to the first selectmen and others in the know? This space was considered for the Jewish center about 15 years ago. That got shot down. It was considered for the nature center and shot down almost immediately by those on the committee because it would have too much of an environmental impact, and that building was only between 2,500 and 5,000 square feet. Any high-density development in this area would change the character of this long-established single-family residential era, area. This is a quote from our first selectmen. "And 32,000 square feet plus parking is very high density. It is the equivalent of 16 of my homes, where three homes currently stand, plus 135 parking spaces, where currently there are about 20." The Paquannac River is polluted in the area, according to Jim Norgin. As part of an effort to mitigate the pollution in the Paquannac, the council has authorized first selectman Vicky Tesoro to pay 6.9 million for another 25 acres of land on Hardy Lane. The land sits roughly between Churchill Road and the river. The town intends that the land buffer, as a buffer in the river's watershed, officials said. Norgin said protecting the land from development was key in his presentation to the council on November 5th, 2020. This part of the Paquannac Valley is so critical, he said, "The parts are extremely steep, so building on it is not recommended because it will direct all that water to the river. The contours are just too steep. You can't fool Mother Nature. If you bulldoze dirt onto a slope, it's not going to hold. Even when the best of intention and management, you can't hold back that water, and that is flowing right into the Paquannac River." This is a quote from your own expert on November 5th, 2020, when it was presented to you to purchase this property. I have to expect that part of the decision to purchase this property was based on that expert testimony. In contrast, by building on the Board of Ed property, you can develop two needs with two levels on a spot that is already a good neighbor to its surrounding residents and has been for decades, giving you the additional meeting space in the evenings when the senior center is closed. If this administration had chosen to spend 1/25th of the time to help bring the Veterans' Center to fruition, a $3 million project that only needs an additional $1 million, that project would have been done and used by now, contributing to the additional space needed in town. These projects would not only be smart developments, but also respectful of the town and the taxpayers while fulfilling three of our infrastructure needs. So I stand here today and ask you again to not push this through and force more unnecessary division and debt on this town, but do the smart and responsible thing by attending to the actual issues and looking toward the whole picture that is Trumbull and the future obligations you are placing on the wallets of the people who already live here and call Trumbull home. I'm asking you to consider all of this and send them back to the drawing board and do what is right, this time being responsible to an entire town and not just a shiny new want. I understand how hard of an ass that is, but it is better to go back to the drawing board than saddle the residents of this for years to come and ruin a part of town we can never get back. I think we have seen far too much of that already. Thank you.
Next on the list is Kim DeCorpo.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for your time. I'm here to speak about the community center. I'm sorry, I'm here to talk about the community center, senior center. My recollection of this property when it was purchased is that it was for preservation purposes. I sat on the conservation commission for four years, and the Paquannac watershed was, has always been a top priority to be preserved. I feel this project will put it at a great risk for not only the watershed, the wildlife and the environment. Trumbull is very limited in its remaining open space. I also feel that this has been, this is a total disregard for the residents of the area. I feel that it will devalue their property as well as cause traffic and safety issues. I do not support this location for this project, and I have concerns regarding the project as a whole from a taxpayer perspective. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. DeCorpo. If nobody else on the list, is there anybody else who'd like to speak to any item on the agenda this evening? Ma'am? Please come up.
I'm at 223 Churchill Road, and I am also here about the community center, which will impact my neighborhood. I do want to start thanking everybody for your time and for listening to our concerns. I am probably going to be reiterating what you've heard, but I have no regrets in that. I hope you don't either. And I do want to thank the building committee. I know that they put a lot of time and effort into this, and so I do want to thank them for the time and effort that they put into it as well. There, our neighborhood has a lot of concerns. I know in the interest of time, I'm only going to focus on a very small piece of that, but I do want to let you know, you have heard primarily about the impact on the Paquannac Valley and on the traffic issues, because those are our two primary concerns, but there are so many auxiliary concerns related to that that aren't even being touched on. So I just want to make the council aware that this is just the tip of the iceberg for us in this community. I am in favor of a senior center. I see the need for it. I, I am not in favor of the proposed site. When it, when the town first proposed a new senior center, there was land that was purchased from residents on Old Churchill Road. That was the original site for anyone who wasn't on the council at that time. And the council denied that as a site on Old Churchill Road for two primary reasons, and this is stated on record. They said that it would have a negative impact on the Paquannac Valley, and it would increase traffic on Churchill Road. And so the Old Churchill Road site was put aside, and a committee was formed to come up with a new site. And what is astounding is that the new site that is proposed touches on the exact two points for which it was rejected the first time. In fact, the impact on the Paquannac Valley is going to be even greater in this instance because there was no development there previously. So we're putting a building where none existed before, at least at the Old Churchill site. There were buildings there. And then, the traffic issue on Churchill Road is going to be enormous, as you've already heard, and I think even more impactful than it was going to be at Old Churchill Road because that at least was a side street that shot off of the road. But to put a turn lane and a proposed traffic light on Churchill Road to make that more safer traffic leads to many other concerns for those of us who live on this road and see the traffic patterns, as you have already heard. We see what happens there on a day-to-day basis. You already heard one neighbor saying that it takes her sometimes four minutes to get out of her driveway during rush hour. I can attest to that. I can tell you that when school buses are stopped on that road, how the traffic backs up so much that we cannot get out of our driveways, and a traffic light will have the same impact on those of us who live within several feet of that traffic light. When the traffic is backed up at that light, how will we get in and out of our driveways? A proposed right turn lane only gives us more lanes that we have to cross to get out of that driveway. So I think it just compounds the problems that already exist there. I just want to say that I think we should have a stay of execution on, on the senior center where it exists, for this proposed site, and choose an already existing building that is not going to have an adverse impact on the neighborhood. A, a building that already exists that's not going to gut part of the Paquannac Valley and disrupt neighbors that are very upset about this location. And let's, while we have this day of execution to perhaps investigate an already existing site, let's funnel funds to address the Hillcrest rebuild that's coming up, the Booth Hill and Jane Ryan upgrades that have been proposed, and certainly the McDougal football field that other residents here have been speaking out against. I think those would be a better allocation for whatever funds you would put towards a senior center at this time, and gives us time to consider other options for the senior center, especially in a time of inflation right now where taxpayers are already very concerned about increases in their taxes, that we know the senior center and community center will have an impact on that. Thank you.
Before you step away, can you give us your name and spell the last name for us?
The last name is Janet Kramka, K-R-A-M-K-A, 223 Churchill Road.
Thank you so much. Is there anybody else who would like to speak tonight? Ma'am?
Hello, my name is Mary Murdock, and I live at 11 Hardy Lane. I'm speaking tonight, should I just let you know? I've spoke to the building committee, but to the town council now, that I oppose the development of the senior slash community center on Hardy Lane, and I urge the town council to consider alternate options for this land. I am the only, well, there's two homes on Hardy Lane. I am the one closest to the development. My home was built in 1943, and I'm extremely concerned that it's not going to withstand this type of development when it comes to our in-ground pool, the structure of the house, et cetera. I don't think it's going to withstand it, and I'm very concerned about that. And with my concerns, I've not really been heard or said what would happen. I'd like the town to consider alternate options for this, such as possibly selling back some of the vacant homes that currently reside on the street. We have no community. It's just a dead end with three vacant homes that are currently falling apart. They're a health hazard, and, you know, I can speak about the traffic concerns from my own personal experience getting in and out of Hardy Lane. Everybody has spoken about all the points, and we all understand. The wildlife, the traffic, et cetera, it's all a problem. You cannot get in and out of Hardy Lane, and I think it's just time that the town council really thinks about what is going to be brought forth to you tonight when it comes to building this on Hardy Lane. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Murdock. Any further public comment? John, sir?
Hi there, sir. I was a little bit late, missed the beginning of the meeting, but Chris Shea, 14 Bayberry Lane, adjacent to Unity Park, Unity Baseball Fields. And it's my understanding, there's a drainage project that has been brought forth and I believe has been approved, but I just wanted to come and speak about that. I did share some video and some photographs of the past few storms that have hit Trumbull, hit the area, and have impacted the park, and have impacted people's yards and properties along Bayberry Lane that's adjacent to Unity Park. You can, I'm not sure who's familiar with that, but ultimately, you've got ponds over there that have been breaching over the last couple of years. We've now lived in this residence for five years, and each storm, the water is coming closer and closer to our home. It breaches over the, the park in the road, or the road in the park, excuse me. It breaches all those culverts and floods extremely quickly, and it's a dangerous situation. So I'm pleased to hear that this is still in the funding. I, I hope that that doesn't change, but ultimately, it's, it's, it's been a hazard for this area ever since EverSource came through and cleaned out the, all of the trees and forestation underneath the power lines there. So soon as that been removed back in 2020, that really exacerbated this problem coming over into the, into people's yards. And so I have two sump pumps that haven't gone off now for five years, and now in the past six months, they go off on nearly every storm, and most of that water is coming directly from the park into my yard. So, again, just wanted to show up and say thanks for approving it, and hopefully that stays in the, in the program. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shea. Ma'am?
Patricia Kelly, 15 Gibson Avenue. So the only thing I really want to say is to, to you guys is, every resident here that has spoken tonight, I've heard them multiple times at the building committee meetings. They're never listened to, ever. So please, take that, your ears this, this evening, and listen to every single thing that they've told you, and think about if this was in your backyard, if this was going to be when you make a right turn on your street, or whatever it is, listen to the environmental impact. Just take it into consideration that these could be your neighbors, this could be your street, this could be your home. So please, listen to them. Someone needs to listen to them because the building committee certainly was not listening to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Kelly. Anybody else? Last call for public comment. All right, thank you for all your comments, and thank you for your attendance this evening. We're going to get into our agenda. We do have two discussion items. I think we'll take the second one first, which is the Community Facilities Building Committee update. For those in attendance, there is no council vote on any aspect of the project this evening or receive an update from the chairman, Lori Hayes O'Brien. Welcome.
Thank you, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Happy New Year, and welcome to the new council members. I know you're kind of coming into this project late, and hopefully, as we move on, you'll understand a little bit of what the background has been of this project since 2015. This is purely an update. There's no vote, as Mr. Masaro stated. This is just an update to say what we've done since the last time we were here reporting to you. There will be more information coming to your way very soon, and I will get into that in a little bit. I wanted to thank some of the committee members that are here and for coming tonight and for putting in a lot of time and effort into this. See, Dave Gala, Ron Fligno, Tony Silver's here, Mike Buzzwell. I want to point out Don Cantafio, who had been our vice chair while she was a council member, hopefully will be joining us again someday. These people have put a lot of time and effort, as have a number of the town employees and our architects. I also understand that we are possibly getting new members tonight, which we're happy to have them join. I will ask them before they leave to potentially give me their email because we have a meeting next week, and we'll need some contact information. So since our last update, we've met about four times since then. Much of the work in the last six months has been on the architects' back. They've been tweaking the conceptual design and gathering the information needed for the feasibility study final report. That's what we'll That's what we'll be presented with. And again, that's, that's, this is the final report for the feasibility study only. This is not the final report for the project. Believe it or not, even in year eight, we are still at the very, very beginning stages of this. The tweaks that came about from the last time we were here were from the senior center staff. See Michelle is here as well, who is invaluable to this. Just kind of cleaning some things up and need for a nurses station, little things about the building that we've, that we've kind of developed over time and as well as town departments who really looked a little bit more about long-term energy savings. We looked at some of the drawings as they were at, really large windows, tall ceilings. We kind of brought all that down and the looks of, of energy savings further on down the road. As always, I always try to stress this, it's a fluid process. What you'll be seeing in the next month or so will not be what will finally end up. It's a fluid process with getting input from all of you and other municipal approvals as well. Greater details will be coming on all of it and I, I can't stress that enough. I know we talk a lot about all these little details and people saying when we get there, there is a process to this. I know if anybody's ever been on a building committee, the beginning seems like it's the final stages. It's really when you dig into after this part where we get a lot more of the detail that's been asked about. At our December meeting, the committee unanimously approved and accepted the feasibility study report that was presented by QA and M Architects for the Senior Community Center at Hardy Lane. It's very lengthy and with the permission of the chair, I would like to send it to all the town council members in the next day or so. You had, do not have a resolution as of now. You don't have anything on your agenda, but it is a 730-page document, I believe. And I would like you to have ample time to really kind of go through the process of looking at that. So if that's okay.
Yeah, I'm not sure if we sent the link to your minutes with that. Did we send that? Did I ask you?
The link is complicated to send, I'll tell you that.
Yes, it's a, it's a very large document.
Yeah, so I'd like to send it through, through Margaret and send it out and.
Yeah, we'll certainly be sure that.
And didn't want to do that before because I don't want to confuse people to think that this was something that we're voting on now, but this is just time to kind of really research the history and kind of where some of the decisions came from and hopefully that will answer some of your questions as we move on in the process. Some of the things that are included in the report, there's a timeline summary of the project from 2015 to present. It has morphed and changed and moved and, but in keeping that, when I was typing up some of my notes, my main thought is the real drive of this has been a senior center that is not something we should be, we should be proud of what it, where it is right now. Michelle and her team have done an amazing job in not really great situation. And as far, as long as I can remember, long before I've been involved in this, is there's been a discussion about creating a senior center. Being a community center just seems like a, an easy fit with it because there's a lot of times that seniors aren't in there. There's definitely a need. I've been looking back at some of the minutes from when this first started and actually when Churchill Road was actually approved by this body. And we're really coming from are all the same concerns, meeting space, a place for community. I'll say the word pickleball because that's, that's a popular thing as well, but there, all those needs are still as important. What I would say about our current senior center now is it's more important than ever. Wherever this council decides to do, whatever the town decides to do, we're, we're going to be in a spot soon that that is not going to be an option without pouring a lot of money into it and not an ideal situation. Again, I've done a million, a wonderful job. I always say, if you build it, they will come. She's built a wonderful program and it's, it's flourishing, but not in the space that it's in. Back to the report. So there'll be a summary of the space and program needs, the site evaluations, the results of the traffic and environmental studies will be in there, concept and threshold designs and some cost estimates. As I just said to you, the report is attached to our minutes, so it's available online to anybody to get, but I would like to send it directly to you. Hopefully we can make that happen. With the completion of the feasibility study report, Q and M's current contract is done. That was, the contract we had was to come up to this feasibility report. A new contract has been negotiated with the town attorneys and accepted by our committee at our December meeting. That will be coming to you. I want to stress and we'll talk about that more when it does come to you, it's done in phases so that if we get to a certain part and that stops, there's no, no approval at this part, we are no longer in need of completing the rest of that contract. So you'll understand that when you see it, but we, the town attorneys did a really good job of making sure that we weren't stuck into more money than we, than we need to be, that it really follows the steps that need to happen. So next steps coming up soon will be the committee will be seeking an 824 site approval from planning and zoning. That we feel like you need before you can really have a full picture of this. So that will hopefully be coming up soon. Again, I'll note that the feasibility study is only the first phase of this project and the next phases, concepts, designs will become schematic designs, more detailed cost estimating will develop, necessary municipal approvals and opinions will be sought and a referendum will be needed, which I believe is the first for Trumbull. So I think we're all kind of wading into uncharted territories with that. I always try to say at the end of this, as a reminder, our job as a committee is to recommend what and where with a lot of, you'll see from the 720 pages, that has been tossed around a million times. I hear the people's concerns. Honestly, I'll be honest, I'm a little offended to say that we don't hear them, but we, we are working with the information that we have, the sites we were given, how they were evaluated. If that changes, so be it, then that will be it. But I, this committee has been, I think, open-minded and tried to take in the information the best they can. There were some, if there's some information out there that just isn't true and if people came to the, or can look at the minutes to kind of clarify that or contact any of us to do that. Again, I'd say before you move on to being, your part of this, of being approval down the road, if you haven't been to Priscilla Place, please go and you'll see that they make it look really lovely, but it is not an ideal situation, particularly for a senior center. I think Trumbull, it's time that we made something that we're proud of. We have an opportunity to do that. I think that it's been talked about long enough. I can, I think I said at the last meeting, I can remember when I first moved here, talking about a community center on Hillendale, I believe it was Hillendale Country Club that had to be at least 20 years ago. So the idea that this has kind of been fast-paced, there's anybody that's been really working with this, it isn't. It's been a long time coming. As always, we talk about the, hopefully the ability to get grants and some support so that this doesn't always fall on the taxpayers' money. Unfortunately, that only comes when you're ready to shovel to the ground. So you can't count on a grant yet until we can really say what we're doing and the approvals have happened. So, but we will be seeking them for sure. Again, we have a responsibility to create a space that we can meet the needs of our senior population and benefit our whole community and I think the opportunity is here for us to do that. I want to thank again my committee members, the town employees. Our architects have been here almost since day one. I believe we brought them on in 2016. They are patient and creative and have done an amazing job of just going with the flow. You'll see in your 720-page document, this thing has twisted and turned a number of times over the years and I think they really have a good sense of Trumbull and we're really grateful for the work they've done. And that's where we are up to date.
Thank you. I have one question.
Sure.
In terms of all of the requirements that you have yet to complete, do you have a target date to complete all of that by?
So as far as specifically, you mean?
Well, all of the building committee rules.
So my understanding is our, our next step would be to go to planning and zoning and have them look at the site. We have all the information in the feasibility study is kind of what is going to be presented for the approvals. From what happened, I know the last time this came up in 2017, we then came back to the town council and they, at that time, basically voted, and that was when it was at the Churchill Road site, for the, the location and the scope of the project, so kind of the concept designs. And then we would move forward with traffic, the traffic commission, or traffic authority, which is the police commission, I believe, fire marshal, any other things that are deemed necessary, depending on what, what comes up from the drawings and where we're at at that point.
So, excuse, how many months do you think that's going to take?
Hmm. Dan, any ideas?
Can't really say. Really, really depends on how quickly everybody works. If the, if the, we're, what we're aiming at is that the, in what, in the way the agreement, the new agreement with the architect is structured, well, let me step back. We really, if you take a look at the building committee rules, I hate to say they're outdated, but you may want to take, you may want to take a look at them because just the, the things that have to happen don't really flow. And that's something else, it's, it's a side issue, but it's something that needs to be worked on. They were basically developed in 1981 and the, but what we're doing now is we are going for the 824. If the site is not approved, then that kind of puts everything back a step. So we're going with, with the 824. If the, as you know, if the planning and zoning commission rejects the 824, council can override that with a two-thirds vote. But once we get beyond that, the, it's, it's going to be a few months. We would like to, you understand the referendum comes as a result of a bond issue having been approved. So the, so it's going to, there's going to be a proposal to the Board of Finance and to the town council to approve a bond, bond issue. And once that happens, it will go to the, it'll go to referendum, hopefully sometime before the, certainly before November, the summer.
Just looking for a date.
I don't have a date.
I mean, I am, I, not a specific date, but a general date. So I am familiar with the rules and most everything the chairman Hayes O'Brien stated are in the rules.
Yes.
The 824, police commission, traffic report, et cetera. I'm not going to, I just want a timeframe.
And the architect has been touching base with these various officials along the way so that they are, you know, familiar with the, the architect or the engineers who are working for them have, have been going through that. I, I would say you're probably talking August, September, some time for that for, for referendum.
Sounds like that to me. Thank you.
Yeah. I'll just kind of do it in layman's terms a little bit. My understanding too, when you actually look at those building committee rules, there seemed to be a lot of approvals before we ever came back to town council, the way it's kind of worked out in there. And I think we felt in interpreting them that, that was money wasted. A lot of the approvals that had to go down, the architect will have to do more work. The designs are going to have to be more schematic instead of conceptual. That's money. And if we aren't going to get past a site approval or a town council approval, we did not want to engage into that part of it until, you know, the people who are going to be making a lot of the big decisions are part of it. So I think that's part of our thinking and then the rest kind of flows from there. So it's really about the initial planning and zoning and coming back to, to you people.
Do you have a handle on how much money has been spent so far?
Since, and I hope I have this right. I did ask Dan yesterday. Since 2015, it's been about $270,000 is, was, okay. He did, he did. About $270,000. So that's gone from the initial committee before this one and then this one.
Thank you. I'm going to open questioning from the council. Council members on the telephone, do you have any questions for Chairman Hayes O'Brien? Are you there?
I do, I do have one, sorry, Veronica Lenten here. I do have one quick question. I know she said this is 2015, there's been about $270,000 in expenses, but could she please review or could someone review for everyone there, how much it costs to purchase the land on Hardy Lane where we're looking to place her? Because I do think that should be factored in and it should be part of the answer to the question.
I think we know that the cost was 6.9 million for the property.
I just would like to speak to that and I don't know if anybody wants me to, but I'm going to anyhow if I could. That land purchase happened when we are, we were on a two, almost a two-year hiatus for our committee during COVID. And that land purchase happened, I read about it in the paper like anybody else. No one came to our committee and said, would you build there? As far as I know, no one went to the architect and said, would you build there? So, and my understanding, once it, the, it came back to us, is that it was to stop this developer. That would have been a lot more of an issue than, than what we're presenting. So I get that part of it, but my understanding is this was not bought for this. Our committee charge was clearly that we are supposed to be looking at town-owned properties. That became on the list on the town-owned properties. It got weighed out with any, any of the other ones that are on the list. So I, I understand that thinking. I just, if I, it's not in my budget. That's what I'll say.
It's paid for. Understood.
Thank you.
Mr. Lamoyne?
Thank you. Good evening, Lord.
Good evening.
Did the committee try to solicit any neighbor input?
So this is when it gets a little tricky. Meetings are always open, obviously, and at the very beginning of this, we did have a lot of neighbors we haven't in a very long time. We are always open to that. As far as moving down and how people are supposed to be told about this, I'm not really sure that that, how much that falls on the committee or how much that falls as we move forward. In other words, a site evaluation that kind of, by the planning and zoning. So did we go door to door? No. Was it, has it been advertised? Yes. We've heard people's concerns. A lot of them were our concerns, to be honest with you. And then really going through the environmental study and the traffic study, some of that was alleviated. I've said this before and it's not a popular thing to say, but I know that it's not a perfect site. We haven't found one in Trumbull. There are things we are, we were doing to protect that site to the best of our ability. Obviously, things will change, but to the best of our ability to, to always be conscientious of the ecological factors, the neighbors, to the best of our ability. So would we like neighbor input? Absolutely. I understand their concerns. You know, I think anytime, I can remember years ago when we were looking at other sites and no, who want, nobody probably wants this near them. There's not a lot of options and there's not a lot of good ones. A lot of the things that have been brought up, we've, we've studied and it really has not been possible sites or preferable sites.
Well, I'm, I'm not sure how you understand neighbors' feelings without asking for their input.
Well, the, the committee meetings are, are just like this. There's public comments and, you know, we've received that information, so.
Okay. And just one more comment and this goes back to Mrs. Kramka during a public comment about the safety issue on Old Churchill Road with the traffic and such. Trying to understand how moving at just a couple thousand yards down the road makes it safer.
So you're comparing the Old Churchill Road site to there?
Yes.
So I understand people's concerns with that. I had concerns when I was on the committee at Old Churchill Road. That was approved by both planning and zoning and town council. The, but the main reason people are saying, well, for one, it got, by the time we came back from COVID, that was off the books. Those houses have been sold, certainly not from anything we've said, but that Churchill Road was no longer an option. I'm not sure if it's when you were on the committee, Mr. Lamoyne, that we, Churchill, we were still focusing on that and having drawings with that. Moving away from that four, the way, is it a three or four intersection was really the main concern of coming down Quality Street and that. And where Hardy Lane is ecologically, environmentally, seems to have, we have a better, better options of where we can place the building than we did, than we did there. That was a larger building in a smaller space with houses right on it. Yes, well, the traffic, safety issues, I live off Daniels Farm Road now. I get it. I like, there, there's always going to be things. We would, we would be working with the DOT if this is the site that's chosen to, to put in as many factors as we can to make this a safer spot. A, a traffic light, it, my understanding, will never happen. It didn't have, wasn't going to be approved by DOT up at Churchill Road. I, it won't, it probably happened there, but there are other safety factors that can hopefully, that the, the traffic engineers have discussed and that further down the road, we would have DOT come in and make as many suggestions as they can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Mecca.
Through the chair, Mrs. Hayes O'Brien.
It's so weird when you call me that.
So I think one of the things though, this has been going on for a long time, so it's hard unless you've been involved throughout, you know, at one point, Island Brook Park, for those of you who don't know, was considered to, much of, to, to the chagrin of the people who lived around that and the, and it would have completely eliminated the, the park, you know, that we know today for all it's used for. So the other big difference, I just want to make sure people know, and if you could emphasize this, is that project on Old Churchill Road to which many of us ended up rejecting or disagreeing. or disagreeing with, was because of the volume of potential users with the pool attached, uh, could have been significantly more than anything that you're proposing now, just because I think we were looking at a competition pool as well as a recreational pool, right?
Yes.
All right, well, whatever, we were considering a pool.
The issue with the pool, that it was neither a competition or a good, it was just a, it was just a, it was just a pool.
Body of a letter.
Didn't satisfy anyone.
Like a kiddie pool or?
All right. It just wasn't, it wasn't sufficient for anyone's needs.
All right. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure though, that's also factored in. Thank you.
Yeah, I know. They want to keep talking about how this is kind of twisted and turned. At one point, we had, um, joined in with the Aquatic, um, Committee, which hopefully that will rise again in some other way. But that, uh, it became too big, became too big. Um, and realistically, there wasn't going to be a space anywhere that was going to fit that. It was good to explore it. You want to explore everything, as you'll see from the 720 pages, hopefully we have, but it was just too big. Um, some of the things about the traffic patterns of the senior center, they're a little more predictable. We know this is going to be a community center also, but the reality is that isn't going to happen a lot during school hours, um, other than our pickleball friends, probably. There will be some rec programs, um, but we're, there, there's been a lot of conversations about this, how the senior center hours, how we can kind of work things out, and some of that will be with some traffic patterns and things like that. So all of that, um, the, the joy of having these architects on from the beginning is they've heard all of this and really, um, knew the ins and outs of that. So there's so much more to be discussed as far as fixing some of that and helping with some of that. Um, but again, like I said, this committee has, um, worked hard. This is not easy decision. They're not going to be popular decisions no matter where we place it. But I don't want the, the idea being lost of how need needy this is. This isn't a want for us anymore as far as the senior center. You can decide about the rest of it, but, um, I don't think we want to be a town without a senior center. I think we should be a town with a community center. Um, uh, and, you know, that's my thoughts. I think that's most of the committee's thoughts and, um, trying to riddle away the best way that that can happen.
Mr. Cento?
Um, I just want to go back to the traffic light. In the past, um, the first selectman had made comments in the past about the traffic light, that she wouldn't support a project on that road without a traffic light.
At that cor, at that intersection of an Old Churchill?
Well, even on the whole road?
No. That, that wasn't the, that, that wasn't my understanding. Uh, it, it was always, my understanding, the concern was that Quality Street to the Old Churchill Road and that the, um, actually Planning and Zoning at that point had, had suggested a traffic light, DOT shut it down. Go ahead.
And good evening, everybody. Happy New Year. Um, yeah, just to make sure, I'd never said anything about Churchill Road, the entire road. I spoke specifically about the project up at Old Churchill Road and the Quality Street intersection and how dangerous that was. It was being looked at as an enhancement to the, uh, Town Hall campus area, allowing people to cross the road of Churchill Road to get over to Stop and Shop, to the library. And I was not in favor of that project for several reasons. One of them was, um, because, uh, there was no traffic light and that DOT would not approve one there.
Thank you very much. Through the chair. Um, I just want to thank you, Lori. I know that this is a thankless job. The whole committee has a very challenging job. Um, I think it's critical that we hear residents, so thank you to everybody who came out tonight to speak to us. Um, you know, I've had the pleasure and privilege through my work over the last few months of touring and visiting senior and social service centers throughout all of Fairfield County and portions of Litchfield County as well. And having that as an asset is so, so important for our seniors and for the community because social services are run out of senior centers as well. Um, I know Michelle does an incredible job with what we have, but I don't think we should be looking at the senior center as something extra. I think no matter, you know, how we navigate the where of it, it has to be a priority and it's been a long time coming. Um, to me, you know, a mom with kids in the school system, all of the education upgrades are critical, but this is too, because we want seniors to have a place to live, to age in place, to enjoy recreation opportunities. Um, and so, you know, I just want to say thank you. I want us to really focus on the fact that we need this. Um, it's not a want, it's a need. And hopefully through the review of the documents you provide and questions and watching Planning and Zoning, we can get to a place where we get a location that is suitable for everyone and, you know, so thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Um, that's all, Carl. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Ashley.
Thank you. Mr. Cento? Go ahead.
When did the charge change for, um, a community center to a senior center, a senior center to a community center? When did that change in its prospect of this?
Actually, from the beginning of this, in 2015, that, the actual name of that, and I think Mr. Piff goes on the phone, was the Senior Community Study Committee. It's always been that, um, conversation, um, continually that we saw and actually in touring many other senior centers, that they basically are used as a community center. Um, and being very involved with the school systems, I've, uh, school system, I've heard forever that unfortunately, our community center becomes our high school and our, our other, we've talked about this, the other gyms, the other, um, buildings. So we're wearing and tearing on our schools without having something like this. So it's always been part of the conversation. Um, the senior center has been the focus of the, the programming. The community center aspect is really about the recreational piece. That's also a benefit to our children as well. Um, and, um, and meeting space has always been a, a driving force. So it has never changed as a charge. That has always been part of the conversation.
Anything further from the council? If not, I'll close this discussion. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll look forward to seeing you in the coming months.
Near future. And I will send that to you, Margaret, and good luck.
Thank you much. Our second discussion item can take a fair amount of time, um, but in the, in the interest of time and everybody's attention, um, the American Rescue Plan was a federal legislation that granted the town $10.5 million approximately to offset losses and to benefit the community from, um, the effects of the COVID experience. So I've placed this on the agenda for people who are not aware. A year ago, we allocated most of the remaining, uh, $10.5 million in this fund to various, uh, projects and purposes. Uh, that was a collaborative, uh, effort amongst the first selectmen, the Board of Finance and the council. Uh, so the first half of that money was used to offset, uh, budgetary issues, uh, a few years ago. Uh, so we've been provided, uh, a spreadsheet of the projects, um, that were approved, the amounts of money that were approved for the projects and those that have been expended thus far. I think the council members have that information. Um, so the purpose of this discussion is really to get an update, to see that what we allocated money for, uh, has or has not been spent and, uh, whether the unused funds, which is approximately $455,000, could be spent. Uh, so I will open, I don't know, is there anybody who wants to speak to this discussion topic from the administration?
I'm here for the first time here on the senior social conference. So.
So, no? Okay. Uh, everybody, council people should have gotten an email with that. Do you have any printed copies? Couldn't open it. All right, we'll share. Share amongst yourselves. Yeah, there's a link also. If you have a device, you can, you can add to it. Okay. So maybe, once again, good evening.
Good evening. Um, I'd like to wait until George gets back in the room before we proceed, because I'll have more answers to questions.
Okay.
Here it comes. And perhaps we should wait until everybody gets a spreadsheet.
Council people, do we need more time or do you have what you need?
Can you see?
Through the chair.
Yes, Ms. Cardianna.
I mean, if we look at this, right, whether you have the spreadsheet or not, there's numerous projects that have been completed, that are in progress. I think, um, there's just a handful that haven't been started and one note about needing additional funding. Um, I would be interested if we started with those to understand what hasn't been started and what needs additional funding, because the things in progress to me mean we're in a good place. So I don't know if, given that George is here, if the kind of three at the bottom or the one at the top, which is the Plan of Conservation and Development.
Your input is invalid.
Good to know.
You didn't know I had, you didn't know I had multiple voices?
I didn't.
Neither did I.
That was a good voice.
Sorry about that.
I'm glad you were talking, Ashley.
I know, right? Right, so, um, you know, if we could start there, maybe it doesn't require waiting on spreadsheets to be copied.
Rena can step up.
In the name of time.
So, so we can start with the Plan of Conservation and Development. And, um, if you will remember, when the original request was made, I recommended $100,000 for that, um, that plan to the consultant. Uh, and when they went out to bid, or I should, let me step back. When it went through the Board of Finance, the Board of Finance agreed with $100,000, but came, the council cut it to $75,000 to fund that consultant. But ultimately, when it went out to bid, it actually came in at $100,000. So we are short $25,000. And Rena, do you want to?
She's left.
Okay. Oh, okay. Rena can speak a little bit more to that if you have questions.
I'm in.
We're talking about the Plan of Conservation and Development and the need for additional $25,000.
Hi, Rena Backler, Director of Economic and Community Development. The initial request for the Plan of Conservation and Development was for $100,000. It's my understanding it was, it was knocked back to $75,000. The bids came in and they were, there was one under $75,000. All of them were over, uh, the amount of money allocated. The selection of the firm, um, that is currently undertaking the Plan of Conservation and Development, uh, the, the amount of the bid exceeded $75,000, which we knew it would. We, 10 years ago, when was the last? 2014 was the last conservation, Plan of Conservation and Development. I think we paid $75,000 10 years ago. So with cost escalation, wage escalation, that kind of thing, we knew it was going to be more than $75,000. That's why we asked for 100. So we're in a position now where the, you know, um, you know, the, the team that was selected and the best proposal candidly in the bunch, um, and three of the four were all over the budget you allotted us. So we need the additional money to complete the work.
Okay. Does anybody want to address another line item? Excuse me, line item.
I have, I have a question.
Okay, Mr. Dorsey.
Um, it looks like, uh, there's about $200,000 in different line items from the library, um, have not been spent. It says proposing other projects. I don't know what that it's about or.
George, you want to take that? Stefan is here, so.
Thank you.
Hello, Stefan Lind Nielsen. I'm the library director. So, um, originally when we had the, uh, so, so there's multiple different line items here. What, and, uh, two of them are for the, uh, flooring project for the library. Uh, originally, when we went out to get the initial bids for this, to develop an estimate, uh, the contractor that we had worked with, they had quoted us about $370,000, uh, to do the entire, the, the flooring throughout the entire library. Um, that was, uh, prior to going to a state contract after the, the fact that we had gotten the money allocated. Uh, and once we did that, um, we received substantial savings, uh, of, uh, about 43%. So that's 170,000 that we did not end up, uh, end up spending on this project. That project is now complete. It cost us a little less than $200,000. So that means we still have $170,000 that we have allocated for flooring that we now no longer need to spend on flooring. Um, to that end, uh, we developed a number of different, uh, project i, proposals, uh, in order to, uh, you know, use that, those funds, uh, for the library and the residents of Town Trumbull, um, in order to make various different improvements. Uh, so, uh, among that would be painting the interior of the library. That project, and I should say, uh, go ahead.
So I'm not, I'm not sure at this point, this is the proper time to talk about additional projects. I think when we come back and we decide we want to go through another, um, discussion and a vote to approve other projects, I think that would be a more appropriate time to speak about other projects that you might have, um, suggestions for.
Okay.
Okay? Um, there's some other projects that you might want to speak to that are on the list, that are still on the list that have not, uh, not been done, and that would include, um, the $60,000 for the modular study rooms, the library audio induction system, um, if you want to speak to those.
Yes. Okay. Um, so, uh, in regards to the, uh, sorry, the modular study rooms, uh, we do have a vendor, uh, selected, uh, that's also through state contract, um, uh, somebody that has already worked with, uh, the town, uh, Board of Ed, I believe. Um, and, uh, we are ready to move forward with that project once we have approval from, uh, I believe, the fire marshal for fireproofing and, uh, also the building department in terms of electrical and, uh, structural, uh, questions. Um, but, uh, you know, we're excited about having that project completed in the next few, hopefully in the next few months and, um, having that available to the Town Trumbull. Uh, study rooms and, uh, you know, meeting room spaces has been a crucial element that's, uh, that's, we've been trying to address, uh, for a number of years now. Uh, there's not, there's only like three meeting spaces in the library that are really available to the, uh, town's residents and for the library staff and for the Town of Trumbull departments themselves in order to conduct outreach or, uh, programs or other activities. So having these spaces really makes it possible for, uh, people to have a privacy. And, uh, we are now in a Zoom, uh, work from home world, uh, so having a space where people can go and do that type of stuff without impacting everybody else in the library is great. Um, and then finally, uh, the, uh, library also has, um, sorry, one of the project, projects that we had proposed, uh, back when the ARPA, uh, funding was initially going through Board of Finance and, uh, Town Council was an induction loop system. Um, at the time, I believe the town of, or rather, the Board of Finance may have considered this to be such a good idea. So an induction loop system is essentially a, a accessibility technology that works with people's, um, hearing aids. Um, you connect it to a, uh, audio system and makes it so that the transmission goes directly to the person's hearing aid, makes it more like a Samarhoun sound experience in there, you're able to enjoy the, the author talk or concert, a movie, whatever it is that they're watching. Um, so the plan was to have this installed only at the library facility and, uh, then Board of Finance, I believe, decided that it was a good, such a good idea. They, they wanted to have it also considered for other, um, departments in this town, which is great. Um, but that's also something that, uh, George and I have to figure out as to, uh, how that's going to work throughout the other buildings as well, so.
So for the study room and the induction system, are you, there are funds allocated?
Correct.
Are, is the plan to get that done before we have to have this project started this year?
Oh, yes.
Okay. When, when do you think that will be completed?
Well, as far as the study rooms, I'm hoping they'll be in before the beginning of summer. Uh, my, my expectation is, you know, we already have, um, you know, state contract, uh, makes it much easier for us to get this project moving. Um, but, uh, you know, and, um, as long as everything else. else checks out with the Fire Marshal and everything else, we should be able to move over fairly quickly on that. As far as the induction loop, that's really more trying to make sure that we can coordinate with the, you know, Building Department, the other facilities in the town, and of course, a suitable vendor to get that type of installation done.
Through the chair.
Ms. Guardiano, go ahead.
Just a note of clarification, since we have new council members, ARPA funds have to be allocated by December 30th of 2024, but they don't have to be spent until December 30th, 2026. So we're still looking good to get these projects done by 2026, correct?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions concerning the library? Okay, we'll move on then. Thank you. Mr. Sinto?
Yeah, on the, on the status lines, you have like, you know, the status, is that police chief or is that, is that police department or is that paid chief? What does that status mean? Chief? Oh, okay. And then you have Michelle. That's, that's ongoing then?
Yeah.
Okay. So I was like, I'm sure that was paid.
Looks like the chief, the chef, the chief chef. Would you like to hear from, who would you like to hear from? Michelle's here.
Oh, she's here. That's fine. That's great.
Hi, good evening. Michelle Jacob, Director of Human Services. So we were lucky enough to receive funding for three separate programs. So we had the Emergency Assistance Fund, which helped Trumbull residents with financial assistance. Basically, we had, I think, over 100 applicants that applied. We had a rubric system that, that was a fair process for everybody, and they were all granted a certain amount of award based on how they filled out the application. I believe we so far have helped 88 households, primarily with rent, mortgage, utilities, all different kinds of expenses that were in need for individuals during a hard time. We had a few applicants that weren't eligible, and we had a few applicants that just never followed back up or brought us the necessary paperwork. I believe there's 1,000 and something left in the account. We're just going through and making sure we've got everything covered before we spend the rest of that. We also were granted, I think, 150,000 for the local meals program, which was a real success during the pandemic, and it is still a success. It's just going a lot slower. The, the knee's not as big. And we were so focused on the other program, we didn't have time for outreach. So now we'll be focusing on letting individuals in the community know about that. We have six participating restaurants. And if you or a family member have COVID, there's a terminal illness, or a family's going through a very difficult time, no questions asked, you just give us a call, you know, you can go pick up meals at a local restaurant. The goal is not to help somebody really financially, but just to take the burden off of you while you're going through a really difficult time. It's been a successful program. There's nothing else like it. Originally, the idea came from Rena, and we hope to continue that. We're halfway through the funds, so we will, we'll get on using the rest of those. And the third program was support, I think, 75,000 to help us continue our congregate meal program at the Senior Center. That program is run by suggested donations, so we just wanted to make sure that that program does continue. It is very successful in Fairfield County. Usually, congregate meal programs, the food's lousy, comes from a hospital, no one really wants to eat it. We have a fantastic chef. We have a successful program. We're a leader in the county. We can have up to 40 to 60 people a day. They actually won't let us have any more days offered lunch because we're spending too much of the state's money. So it is a success, but we do count on the donations, and these funds are helping prolong that program. And then also, just to supplement the needs in the food pantry, and we'll probably be getting a contract together with a local dairy produce or even somebody that can provide household essentials. So that's where we're at.
Can, can, you have a follow up? Okay, can I ask, if I'm reading this correctly, there's still substantial funds remaining from what was allocated a year ago? Is that right?
Right. So emergency assistance, barely, we have 1,700 left. The ARPA, or I'm sorry, the ARPA local meals funds were halfway through. So we have 75,000 to spend in that program. And with the food pantry and congregate meal program, I think we have about 68,000 left out of 75,000. But that's just us. We, unfortunately, the way food, the food bank works now, municipalities no longer can become eligible, so we'll be losing our services as far as receiving free produce and all of that. So we've been kind of waiting for that to happen, so we can use these funds to help keep that going for our clients. So that is what we will be in the process of doing very soon.
Okay, any other questions? Ms. Guardiano?
I have one question, Michelle. Is it logical for us to consider shifting any of the funds around to add more to the basic needs fund, given how successful that was? Or do you feel like you want to spend these down slowly over the next two years?
We could do either. What we're doing right now is tying up all loose ends for the Emergency Assistance Fund, which was financial assistance. We're making sure that every applicant did receive the funds they requested. For those that didn't follow up, we can give them a last chance. And if there's more funds available, we could use that, the local meals funding for that. I think we could spend the 75,000 on local meals over the course of the next year, too. But it is slow. And I have to say, the restaurants have been fantastic, but it is an exhausting program on their end. So I'm sure that they would like to see it end sooner. But they are hanging in there for us and for the community. So long answer, but yes, we could do that.
Okay. So maybe that's just something that I know the first selectmen will have to make whatever proposals for ARPA, given our ARPA rules. But maybe that's something that we think about and, and look at what the need could be.
Okay. We can do that. Okay.
Any other questions? Mr. Sinto?
This is for Maria, is that okay?
I have a question for Maria.
Sure.
Maria, I remember you were going to engage someone to check all the paperwork on this stuff. Have you done that already? Am I saying that correctly?
No.
It wasn't?
Funding was not approved to hire anyone to assist us. We've been doing that in finance. And we've been using the internal auditor to help us with filings.
Have you got anything that was incorrect back yet, or you guys?
Not yet. No, no notification back that anything was missing at this point, until they audit. You know, we never know when they audit.
All right, thanks.
Any other questions? Mr. Boswell?
Hi, Vicki. I just had two quick questions. I see for committed, not encumbered dollars, Town Facility Study, and I can't remember what that was.
George?
And then the, the other question was, I see non-committed 455,000. I didn't know if you hadn't, I, did you have an idea how you were gonna, or any ideas how you want to spend that, or?
So at this point, when, or at this point, when we allocated these monies originally last year, we wanted to leave a contingency for programs or projects that were underfunded because these were based on estimates. So we went out to bid, and Plan of Conservation Development is a good example. It's underbid by, you know, 25, it was over 25,000 difference from what we allocated. So we wanted a reserve to keep intact until most of these, these projects and programs were either bid or completed to make sure we had enough money. So that's still, that's still an issue, I think, for some of these projects. So, but that can be part of a conversation that we have when we meet again to talk about either reallocating some funds, or as Stefan said, he's looking to, you know, he's got a surplus of 170,000. And it'd be up to the Board of Finance and Town Council to decide whether they want to approve some of the other programs and projects he has in mind.
You know, I can add that I've had a standing request for 13 months for 100,000 to go to the Veterans Center. And I know that we have a whole calendar year to allocate the rest of the money, but I'm of a mind to do this sooner rather than later. And I think, given some of the Board of Finance's conversation about funding different capital plan projects, this is, and we're entering the budget season, I think this is the perfect time to address the 455 that remains and any other shifting of, of allocation. So I'll be calling on the Board of Finance and first selectman, maybe we can get together and start the process.
And your, your second question, which was the facilities, a study, we, we have developed an outline for that. We're working with purchasing. We, we are working on a, on the specifications for doing a solicitation to engage a firm to help us with that. What that study is, is a, we've identified critical key buildings such as Town Hall, Police Department, different library. And a firm will go through each of those and, and do a, an assessment of each facility granular, helping us identify end of life projections, just so that as we develop facility, capital plans going forward, that will inform us to some of the things that we may need to prioritize over others in the years to come.
Thank you. Anyone else on the council? Any other questions on this? It'll be coming back to us in the not-too-distant future. So I'll close the discussion on this. And we will move to our resolutions. Do we have a motion to take TC 30-02 and 30-05 and 30-12 out of order? 30-03? 30-05? Was that Veronica or Mary?
Yeah, I was named Veronica.
Okay. So we have that motion to take those three resolutions out of order. Is there a second? Ms. Guardiano, thank you. Discussion, all in favor? Raise your hands. I think it's unanimous. Is it unanimous consent?
Aye.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, just if I could, if, if you ask for unanimous consent, if there's not, you're gonna have to take a roll call on everything here tonight, yeah.
Yes, yeah, understood. Thank you. All right, we do have unanimous consent. So let's take Resolution TC 30-02. Mr. Foreman, would you move that to the floor, please?
Yes, Resolution TC 30-02, be resolved that the appointment of the first selectman, Regina Evans, as a member of the Golf Commission for a term extending to the first Monday of December 26th, be in the same as hereby approved.
All right, thank you for that. I think we may have the wrong resolution on the floor. Looking for 30-03. Did I say 02? That's my bad, sorry. All right. So do we have a motion to take 30-03 out of order? So move, Ms. Guardiano, second. Mr. Marsh, do we have unanimous consent for that? I believe we do. Thank you. All right, Mr. Thank you. Mr. Foreman, let's try 30-03.
Resolution TC 30-03, be resolved that the reappointment by the first selectman of Anthony Siglioni as a member of the Golf Course Commission for a term extending to the first Monday of December 2026, be in the same as hereby approved.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Ms. Malazi, thank you. Committee report, please. Mr. Foreman? I'm sorry, Mr. Wolf.
Mr. Anthony Siglioni was not present, but would be present in, at the full Town Council meeting.
Anthony Siglioni, 18 Fieldstone Court, part of the Golf Commission. Resolution 03. Sorry.
We've got you. We're still working on your last name.
Well, it's either Chick Ionie in Italian or Siglioni in American, so I don't know which one you want to use.
I know which way I would go.
Questions?
Yes. What, if you're a registered voter, what is your party affiliation?
Republican.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Chickiglioni?
Don't worry, not the first one had the problem.
Knights Young. All right, no questions.
I mean, I feel like we, we need to ask the same question we ask everybody, which is why are you interested in, in serving or continuing to serve?
Sure, no problem. First of all, I'm semi-retired. This, of course, this will be my second term. I enjoy doing projects. Have experience in doing projects from start to finish, building. And that's what I am right now. I'm, I'm the House Committee, House Manager. So I enjoy it. It keeps me busy. And I want to get back to the community. Because unfortunately, I don't think we get paid yet, do we? Anybody? So, so I enjoy, it's just, it's a, I think it's a hobby and giving back to the community. Enjoy it. On a serious note, yes. I've been here for, you know, I went to, I've lived all my life here, basically, in Trumbull.
Welcome to the volunteer club.
That's right. Correct.
Any other questions? If not, a call for a vote? Do we have unanimous consent to this resolution? Anybody on the phone? Unanimous consent?
Yes.
Yep.
Very musical tonight. Thank you. All right, congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Town Council.
All right, next resolution, I think that we have moved ahead is TC 30-05. Mr. Shively, would you bring that to the floor, please?
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Resolution TC 30-05, be resolved that the reappointment of the first selectman, David Varesbi, as a member of the Inland, Wetland and Water Courses Commission for a term extending to the first Monday of December 2026, be in the same as hereby approved.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Okay, Ms. Sutton, thank you. Committee report? Mr. Wolf?
Mr. David Varesbi was not present, moved by Cologne, seconded by Wick to pass without recommendation. Vote motion carried unanimously.
Good evening, Mr. Varesbi.
Good evening. I'm Resolution Number 3005. David Varesbi, 15 Roxton Road, Trumbull, Connecticut. Been a lifelong Trumbull resident, so. I've been on the Wetlands Commission since, I believe, 2015.
And enjoying every minute of it, right?
Every minute of it.
Can you give us your party affiliation?
I am unaffiliated.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, Mr. Varesbi?
Do you want to know why I'm serving? I feel it's important as a professional with professional knowledge. I'm a landscape architect by training and profession. It's important to give back to the community that you live in with your professional knowledge, so it can be greater good to the community and the environment.
Any other questions? If not, can we adopt this resolution by unanimous consent? Thank you. Good, you're paying attention. Thank you, congratulations.
Thank you.
And now we'll take up Resolution TC 30-12. Mr. Dorsey, can you move this to the floor, please?
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Resolution TC, TC 30-12, be resolved that the reappointment of James Meisner as a member of the Pension Board for a term extending to the first Monday of December 2028, be in the same as hereby approved.
Thank you, second. Ms. Malazi, committee report? Mr. Wolf?
James Meisner was not present, moved by Cologne, seconded by Wolf to pass without recommendation. Vote motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, welcome. Mr. Meisner?
Thank you.
Give us your name, address, and party affiliation, please.
James Meisner. I also go by Jim, 62 Driftwood Lane. I am registered as a Democrat.
Tell us about your desire to remain on the Pension Board.
Yeah, I do have an appropriate background. I have an investing and finance background. I'm pleased to serve on the board, primarily, perhaps, not only that we're a well-functioning board, and I think we're doing a good job of making sure that the pension plan is well taken care of, but really because the town has, in a very nonpartisan way, been doing taken care of, but really because the town has, in a very nonpartisan way, been doing the right thing by meeting the required actuarial contribution under both Republican and Democratic administrations and Town Council. You know, it's been a very bipartisan thing. The Board as well operates in a totally bipartisan way, and so for that reason, I think it's a pleasure to serve on it, and would like to do it for another five years, why not?
Five-year terms, boy am I jealous. Maybe not, I don't know. But it's good to have you back, good to see you, old colleague from the old days of the council.
Yes, this brings back memories of many late meetings, including one that went until 4:00 a.m., but we won't go into that.
We'll forget that memorable night. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Meisner? Do we have unanimous consent to adopt his resolution? Yes?
Thank you very much.
Yes.
All right, we're in sync. Congratulations, welcome back. All right, let's go back to the top of the agenda, Resolution TC 30-01. Mr. Wick, will you bring that to the floor, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Resolution TC 30-01, be resolved, whereas pursuant to Public Act 23-204, the Connecticut Secretary of the State will provide a grant to each municipality in the amount of $10,500 for costs related to implementing and conducting early voting, and Vicky A. Tesoro, First Selectman, is hereby authorized, as the individual authorized, to sign the grant application to the Connecticut Secretary of the State, and all subsequent contracts, amendments, reports, and related documents in order to administer and implement the early voting program. Full resolution attached.
Thank you, second, Ms. Malazi. We have Jean Rabineau, a Democrat registrar?
Yes, sir.
To answer any questions on this. We do have a committee report. I think you spoke well. It's a little bit lengthy.
That is correct.
Shall we waive that? Counsel, the reading of the committee report? So move. Second.
Second.
Thank you. Is it unanimous? Yes, it is. Any questions for Ms. Rabineau? If we're hearing none, we all know that this is a grant from the state of Connecticut to help advertise the fact that we're having in-person voting beginning in April. So do we have unanimous consent to adopt this resolution and request the grant? We do. Those of you on the phone, unanimous?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is adopted. Okay, item two, Resolution TC 30-02. Mr. Buswell, will you bring that to the floor, please?
Resolution TC 30-02, be resolved that the reappointment of the First Selectman of Regina Evans as a member of the Golf Course Commission for a term extending to the first Monday of December 2026, be in the same as hereby approved.
Thank you. Do we have a second, Ms. Malazi? Thank you. Committee report?
Regina Evans was present, and I indicated her party affiliation as Republican. She served the last year of a person's term who had left the commission. She's looking forward to a term of her own, doing the policy papers for the Golf Course Commission and other assignments. She stated it's been a pleasure, whenever she can contribute, she will be happy to do. Vote motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. Any discussion? If not, do we have unanimous consent to adopt this resolution? We do? Anybody on, everybody on the phone?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. Resolution is adopted. We'll move on to Resolution TC 30-06. Mrs. Sather, would you bring this to the floor, please?
Sure. Resolution TC 30-04, be it resolved that the appointment by the First Selectman of Richard Gerard as a member of the Inland, Wetlands, and Water Courses Commission for a term extending to the first Monday of December 2026, be in the same is hereby approved.
Do we have a second? Thank you, Ms. Cologne. Committee report?
Richard Gerard was present and indicated his party affiliation as Democrat. His mentor taught him to learn, earn, and to return. This is his way of giving back to the town. He enjoys serving and believes it's a good commission, and they are nonpolitical and get along very well. Vote motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none? Can we adopt this unanimously? Yes? Those of you on the phone?
Yes. Yeah, good.
Thank you very, thank you very much. Resolution is adopted. Move on to Resolution TC 30-06. Ms. Satin, would you bring this to the floor, please?
Sure. Resolution TC 30-06, be resolved that the reappointment of Vincent DiGennaro as an alternate member of the Board of Finance for a term extending to the first Monday of December 2026, be in the same as hereby approved.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Ms. Mitchell, thank you. Committee report?
Vincent DiGennaro was present. He noted he has been on the Board of Finance since 2011. He was originally appointed by Tim Hurst. He finds it rewarding to give back to the town. He has lived in town for 45 years. He believes he has been able to leverage his skills and experience in corporate life to help the town with many different things. The Board of Finance sees a lot of different things come before him. He enjoys this and looks forward to doing it again. Vote motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Any discussion on the resolution? Mr. Marsh?
I would just like to say that Mr. DiGennaro has been instrumental on the Board of Finance. I know it was passed unanimously in committee, but I just felt the need to say that he did yeoman's work in unraveling some of the discrepancies in the past with the Bank of America leases and getting that ship right on that end, so he should be commended for his work.
Highly regarded, member. Any other discussion, comments? If not, can we adopt this unanimously? Yes? Those of you on the phone?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, thank you. Resolution is adopted. We will move to Resolution TC 30-07. Mr. Macken, will you bring it to the floor, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Resolution TC 30-07, be it resolved that the appointment of Kelly Malazi as a Town Council representative to the Community Facilities Building Committee be in the same is hereby approved.
Second.
Thank you. We don't have a committee report on that, I don't believe.
Yes.
Do we? Mr. Wolf?
Kelly Malazi was not present, moved by Cologne, seconded by Wick, to pass without recommendation. Vote motion carried unanimously.
Wow, no recommendation. Couldn't have said it better. This is your last chance to bail on this.
I don't believe that's an option. I would never want to bail on this. I'm very much looking forward to serving on this committee in all honesty, and I'm honored to be asked, so if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any discussion, comments? If not, can we put Kelly Malazi on the Building Committee unanimously?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Okay, it's unanimous. Congratulations, good luck. We'll move to Resolution 30-09. Excuse me, 08. I had it myself again. Let's see. Mr. Lemoine, will you bring this to the floor, please?
Resolution TC 30-08, be it resolved that the appointment of Matthew Sather as a member of the Community Facilities Building Committee be in the same is approved.
Second, Ms. Cologne, committee report, please?
Matthew Sather was present and indicated his party affiliation as Republican. He's a father of three children and the son of two Trumbull seniors. He thinks this project is very important for our town and is committed to careful design. Vote motion carried, five to zero to one, abstention Wick.
Thank you. Any discussion on the resolution? Hearing none, can we adopt it unanimously? Yes, Mr. Wick, yes? Those on the phone? Just two? One more?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, thank you. The resolution is adopted. We will move on to Resolution 30-09. Mr. Cinto, would you bring this to the floor, please?
Resolution TC 30-09, be resolved that the appointment of Richard Crowell as a member of the Communities Facilities Building Committee be in the same is hereby approved.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Sather, thank you. Committee report?
Richard Crowell was present and indicated his party affiliation as Republican. He has lived in the town for 25 years but did not have the capacity in the past to volunteer. He thinks that this is an important project, a community senior center, and should be considered carefully. That people working together should be open-minded and willing to compromise and assist. His background is project management. He recently received his real estate license and has been an executor and trustee. He's used to dealing in all those capacities with budgets, some large, and going through contract invoices, getting into details for potential issues before they become problems. He believes he will be able to assist the committee as they start to get into more of the details of the project. Vote, motion carried, five to zero to one, abstention Wick. The Chair noted that there were two open slots for the Building Committee. Those spots were filled, however, since this is in committee and are passing recommendations to the council, she asked Councilman Cologne to read the following resolution so the committee would, could vote to pass the third recommendation onto council.
I don't think we're there yet. All right, we're discussing 30-09, appointment of Richard Crowell. Discussion. Ms. Guardiano.
Through the Chair. I'd like to make a motion to amend, to insert the name Dawn Cantafio to this resolution.
Second from Ms. Cologne.
In lieu of Ms. Crowell, yes.
Yes, thank you. Discussion on the motion.
I believe Ms. Cantafio is here, and I would love for her to be able to come up and speak to her experience and, you know, take any questions from the council.
Ms. Cantafio, would you like to speak?
My name is Dawn Cantafio. I live at 72 Tate Road, and thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. I've been on the Building Committee for eight years. I have attended, I would say, almost all the meetings and public hearings, and I also would like to, just for the record, state that I did reach out to some of the neighboring people during this process. It went so far as to actually scheduling a meeting at the library with the neighbors, but the person who brought the committee forward said that they weren't able to meet, and I said that they were welcome to meet me anytime. There was also a flyer sent out within the last two years recommending that people contact the three of us from the district, and I hadn't heard from anybody, so there were times when we did reach out to the public to try to get in touch with people, so I just wanted to make that clear as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Marsh?
Through the Chair, for those, hi Dawn. For those who don't know you, you have served previously on the council, correct?
That's correct, for eight years.
At one point, you were the council chair?
That's correct.
Thank you.
And if I may, through the Chair?
Please.
Dawn, can you just tell us a little bit about what you think you bring to this committee? Obviously, you've been on this for eight years, but what do you bring to this committee? And, you know, why, given all of this, do you want to still serve?
One is, like many people before me, to give back to the community, and as being on the Town Council, I have a background with, working with the Building Committees, different people in town, different departments in town, and I think I've worked very well with all the departments, and I'd like to continue that.
Mr. Shively?
Through the Chair. Hi, Dawn.
Hi, Kevin.
So I'm going to be supporting this amendment, and not just because you have historically been absolutely one of the hardest workers that I've ever worked with in this council. You're always prepared, you always know. I know I can always count on you to call you to explain things to me when I don't understand something completely, and you were a tremendous help when I first got elected to this position six years ago. I'm also going to be supporting you because I do believe that it's important, especially for volunteers in town when they've been serving on a committee, to be allowed to continue on those committees. I think it's just, and it doesn't matter what party they're in or anything, it's just I think that once they've put in time, it benefits not only, it's not only out of respect for the person who's serving to allow them to continue to serve, but also because it makes the most sense to the town to have people that have the right experience and right background and know exactly what they're doing to serve on these committees. It benefits all of us, so I'll be supporting that, and should this amendment fail, I may not be able to support the resolution as existing, and I want to make sure that, to say publicly, that that doesn't reflect anything on my belief that the other candidate would not serve properly or serve well. It's just for those reasons that I stated before.
Thank you.
Mr. Marsh?
Through the Chair. Dawn, in your experience on the committee, what has happened when a sitting council member no longer is a sitting council member who was a member of that committee?
I can only, well, I can speak for a couple, but we have expanded the committee in the past to be able to accommodate more members, so we are able to keep people on the council. That has happened on this Building Committee.
Specifically with respect to former Councilman Ted Chase.
Ted Chase, that's correct.
Who was a Republican member of the council who either did not seek reelection or, I think he did not seek reelection.
That's correct.
And I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, that the council approved expansion of the committee specifically so Mr. Chase could continue his work.
That's correct. He voiced opinion to stay on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for refreshing my recollection.
Mr. Wick?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, Ms. Cantafio, thank you for your continuing interest in serving on the Building Committee. Just want to take a moment to speak in favor of the motion to amend, and it's simply because of all of your service to this town, on the Town Council, and on the Building Committee, there's two vacancies and there's three people that have been put up for those vacancies. This Town Council on this motion to amend can vote, at least, on Ms. Cantafio, and if the majority of this council says we don't think she's one of the most qualified candidates, then at least she has had the benefit as a town volunteer to hear the decision of the Town Council. But if we don't, and we move forward just with Mr. Crowell's vote, Ms. Cantafio, long-term prior council member, long-term incumbent Building Committee member, is going to be, by function of math, simply eliminated from that position, and I think it would be a real disappointing start to the tenure of this Town Council to act in that manner. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Guardiano?
So I would just offer one other thing, which is that I don't actually think we're stuck to picking two out of the three people, right? I think that there is the opportunity to lend to Dawn the same decision that was lent to Mr. Chase. Something about my voice. Triggers here, whatever. Carl, do you want me to wait?
Thank you.
You're welcome. You don't need to talk at all tonight, Carl.
Just have a...
May I finish my remarks as soon as? You good, Carl? Okay. Right, and then we actually have another option, right? So we can sit here tonight, pass TC 3008 like we just did, we can pass TC 3009 like I'm imagining is going to be. is going to happen, and then we can take TC thirty ten and amend that resolution to expand the committee and add Dawn Cantafio as the eleventh member. That is an option. We are not stuck having to pick two people. We can put three, what I believe are qualified individuals, on this committee. So I know we're debating the current motion to amend on the floor, but I don't think we're hamstrung to putting two and only two people on.
Thank you, Ms. Cologne.
Through the chair. I also just wanted to illustrate in my short tenure on the council, this is my third term, but working with Ms. Cantafio, there were times when I didn't necessarily agree with her and what that was like as someone who tends to lean towards the same side as her. But she was fair, she was considerate, and she was so well researched, you could only lend an ear to what she had to say. So I just wanted to keep that in mind as we consider her for this.
Thank you.
Mr. Dorsey? Go ahead, Mary. Mary, go ahead.
Her value and her expertise, she is extremely organized, she brings so much to the table, and especially at this point, to lose that knowledge, I just think it, you know, as we have, we have an option to add all three at this point, and to me, I just think that's the best thing rather than, we have, you know, qualified volunteers, and we have services that's been on for years, you'd hate to lose them. So, my perspective.
Thank you, Ms. Sento. Mr. Dorsey?
Through the chair. I understand the points. I think we need just to be organized. We have one motion on the floor right now to replace Ms. Cantafio with, the other way, replace Mr. Crowell with Ms. Cantafio. I think we should vote on it, and then if there is another motion, let's manage that accordingly. So I understand your points, but I think if, instead of giving multiple options, let's take this in order and then vote on the motion to replace. If it fails, then we vote, I would make, I would say we should vote on Mr. Crowell, and then if there is another motion, then so let it be done.
Thank you, Mr. Dorsey. Any other comment? Otherwise, we'll vote on the motion to amend? I'll ask for a roll call vote, please. Madam Clerk?
Thank you.
Mike Boswell?
No.
Mary Isaac?
Yeah.
Eric Story?
No.
Bill Mecca?
Yes.
Ann Sather?
No.
Jennifer Winchell? Veronica Lenzin?
No.
Richard Wolfe?
No.
Jason Marsh?
Yes.
Anthony Dorsey?
No.
Ashley Godiana?
Yes.
Carl Masaro? John Foreman?
No.
Joe Piffco?
No.
Scott Wick?
Yes.
Joy Cologne?
Yes.
Steve Lemoyne?
No.
Kelly Malazi?
Yes.
Tony Sento? Kevin Shively?
Yes.
Nicole Satin?
Yes.
Motion fails ten eleven. We have the resolution on the floor. No, he said no. Mr. Piff- Mr. Piffco?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I heard. Okay, thank you. Resolution TC thirty zero nine is on the floor. Is there any further discussion? Call for a roll call vote, please.
Mike Boswell?
Yes.
Mary Isaac?
No.
Eric Story?
Yeah.
Bill Mecca?
No.
Ann Sather?
Yes.
Jennifer Winchell? Veronica Lenzin?
Yeah.
Richard Wolfe?
Yes.
Jason Marsh?
I'm going to vote yes because it's the right thing to do, and if we are really going to be a council of voting for the best thing for Trumbull, then I agree that Mr. Crowell should be on the committee.
Anthony Dorsey?
Yes.
Ashley Godiana?
Yes.
Carl Masaro?
Yes.
John Foreman?
Yes.
Joe Piffco?
Yeah.
Scott Wick?
Yes.
Joy Cologne?
No.
Steve Lemoyne?
Yes.
Kelly Malazi?
Yes.
Tony Sento? Kevin Shively?
Yes.
Nicole Satin?
I'm going to abstain.
Resolution passes. And Mr. Crowell is now a member of the committee. Resolution TC thirty dash ten, there is no vacancy at this time, so that resolution is moot, will pass on that and move to Resolution TC thirty dash one one.
Through the chair.
Yes.
With TC thirty dash ten, we do have a motion that makes that resolution, a motion to amend that makes that resolution not moot, and I would ask that we be allowed to hear that on the floor.
There is no vacancy to take up this resolution, and there is therefore no amendment.
Through the chair, then I would suggest that we bring it up as new business at the end to expand the committee.
That's an option, and we have considered that.
Yeah, so we're just, we are notifying you that we have new business at the end of the resolutions.
Understood. Thank you. Resolution TC thirty dash eleven. Mr. Lemoyne, would you bring that to the floor, please?
Certainly. Resolution TC thirty dash eleven be resolved at the appointment of Kevin Shively as a town council representative to the Trumbull Veterans and First Responders Center Building Committee be in the same is hereby approved.
Second, Mrs. Malazi, Bazet. Thank you. Committee report, please.
Kevin Shively was present and indicated his party affiliation as Democrat. He explained one of his best experiences he has had over the six years on the town council, was serving on several building committees because it's one of the best opportunities to serve the town in a nonpartisan way, where they all work together and find ways to get what they are trying to achieve accomplished. He likes the idea of the Veterans Center and has from the start. He thinks it's going to be a gem for the town, something that could draw from outside of our town. He has a concern about the cost and where the money is going to come from, as he thinks everyone does, which is why there should be council representation for both sides. To be fully prepared and to serve, he talked with Ms. Hall. She provided him with the opportunity to get all her materials and notes to bring him up to speed so he could hit the ground running and make sure they can continue to move the project forward to its own completion. Vote, motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Any discussion? Mr. Shively? Got the jitters or what?
Well, no, actually, I jumped at this chance. I didn't seek it, but when I was asked if I wanted to serve, I mean, you were there for that first presentation and saw how beautiful it could look, right? And so I'm just excited to be a part of it and basically report back to the council everything that we work on.
Well, I'm looking forward to you and the rest of the committee bringing this forward. I think this is a project that's ready to go, and hopefully you'll be a good impetus for it. Any other questions or comments? Are we now can we adopt the resolution by unanimous consent? Yes? Councilman on the phone?
Yeah.
Thank you. Resolution's adopted. We'll move to Resolution TC thirty dash thirteen. Mr. Sento, would you like to move this to the floor?
Thank you. Resolution TC thirty dash thirteen be resolved that $100,000 is hereby appropriated from fund balance to zero one zero three zero four hundred dash five two 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 oh four recycling services fees contractual.
Do we have a second? Mr. Dorsey, thank you. Committee report?
It's a bit lengthy. Moved by Shively, seconded by Sento. George Estrada confirmed. This is related to the dumping of tires in Old Mine Park. They had difficulty getting responses for additional estimates, but do you have a unit cost estimate of how many loads? But until they get in there and start removing the tires, they won't know the final number. They were prudent and waited for this to work its way through the court system. Three weeks ago, Mr. Starr spoke with the state attorney's investigator and was told the tires could be removed. The state's attorney's office had what they needed, and removing the tires would not compromise the prosecution. The estimates have been provided to the investigator, and the state is going to pursue restitution, but does not know what that will be. It was confirmed whatever restitution is received will be on the town's behalf. Mr. Starr recommended strongly not to have anyone from the public remove the tires. They are heavy, and at this time of year, we'll have water in them which will freeze soon, making it more dangerous to have individuals that are not trained to do it safely. The estimates they have include a truck with a winch that they will tie a certain amount of tires to and pull them up. They will have labor on top to weave them into containers to go into a proper disposal site. That's not something you would want untrained individuals doing on their own. It is a recipe for injury. There were multiple locations identified where tires were dumped. It started last spring. Working with a property owner and a contractor, a camera was set up that ultimately captured the individuals returning and sent a notification to someone to call the police. The police immediately went to the site and apprehended them in the process of dumping tires. This is a statewide problem. There is a tire deposit that is supposed to be coming into effect that should alleviate this, as much like the bottle bill, which gives the incentive to bring the tire back to the garage to get the deposit back. George Estrada explained for the committee, the tires do not have a value to the town. Years ago, there was a process where they would grind them and use them for different applications, but there was an environmental side to that and have since backed away from much of that due to the off-gassing and the oil emitted from the process. Vote, motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. We have our Public Works Director, George Estrada. Do you have a better number for us by any chance?
The estimate that we have is between seven, seventy and one hundred thousand is what. The estimate that we have is between seventy and one hundred thousand. But again, as I had stated before, until we get in, the contractor gets in and begins removing them, loading them into the containers, that will be, there's an incremental cost per container. So we're really unsure at this point exactly what it is.
Questions? Ms. Satin?
Were you able to speak with Home Depot about, I think that was an issue, positioning there to get down to that area, is that right?
I have not gone that route yet until we have the funding in place, but that will be a next step for me.
Do you foresee any possible issues?
I don't anticipate any difficulty in that. We'll clearly indemnify them, and we'll have to follow our procedures to be able to do that.
Through the chair.
Ms. Godiana, please.
Hey, George, can you just take a moment to explain or reiterate why it's so important that this be done through Public Works and not through town residents?
This is an embankment probably forty or fifty feet down. It's a ravine, so the tires were basically released at the top of that, and they arrive into the park. There is no easy way of doing this. Even, we've even, we initially explored trying to see if we had equipment that we could have somehow gotten through the park to load them on and bring them out, but it's a pretty dense wood, and the terrain there does not allow for equipment to actually get there safely. So there's, the only way to really bring these up in a safe manner would be winching them up the side of that hill, and that has to be done by individuals that are prepared and they have the safety equipment, safety procedures in place, the proper equipment in place, and there is clearly always a risk of injury when you're doing that much lifting of heavy anything. So, you know, it's, think of, think of shoveling a long driveway, how difficult that would be, hauling up tires that can be fifty, sixty pounds each full of water, or it's going to be, that's, there's a great risk there.
And a liability presumably for the town.
Absolutely. It's a liability for the town. It absolutely would be a liability for the town, and it's something that I would, I advise against trying to do with town employees and resources because we are, our staffing levels, we're anticipating this weekend a storm that seems to be getting more and more significant as the day goes on. Our drivers are just enough drivers to put in seats to cover the plow roots in this town, so we can't afford to have a couple of our guys injured and not be available for the other responsibilities that they are responsible for.
Mr. Shively?
Through the chair. George, so about how long do you think this is going to take? Because I know that there are a lot of people that are concerned, obviously, if you look at all the chatter on the interwebs and stuff, so. But like, what do you think the whole process would be?
Once a contractor gets in there, I would imagine a couple of weeks is what I would anticipate. Yeah.
Through the chair, can I have a question?
Please, just identify yourself.
Yes, Mary Isaac. Hi, George, just wanted to check, I believe at the board of finance meeting, you said that you thought the defense was going to go to court in the next few weeks. Is there a date set for that at this point, or is it still pending?
I have not heard anything back, but there was a court date scheduled last, the Wednesday before Christmas, and I have not heard anything back from them yet. So I'll follow up probably next week to see if there was any outcome to that.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
Any other questions? Discussion? Mr. Lemoyne?
Thank you, through the chair. So just one thing, I do have, one thirty-one is the next court date for that, for those two defendants.
January thirty-first.
This might be a question for Mr. Shoppick. I'm assuming that if fines are levied, which they should be, that money's going to be returned to the fund this money's being taken out of, and if there's additional damages awarded, where does that money go? Well, first of all, I think realistically, if we get restitution, that's probably what we're going to get. I would not anticipate that there are going to be any additional funds from these two defendants, so I doubt that they're insured for this. The, so, yes, the money would replenish the fund that came out of to whatever extent.
Any further discussion? Questions for Mr. Estrada? If not, can we adopt this resolution by unanimous consent? Votes on the phone? One? Yes, two? Three. It's unanimous. Thank you. The resolution's adopted. Ms. Sorrow?
Thank you. Been asked to ask us for emergency legislation, please.
Moved by Ms. Godiana, second. Mr. Shively, all in favor?
Yes.
Unanimous consent? Okay. It's unanimous. I'm remiss, I don't think Ms. Rabino is still here. I'm thinking that the grant application for the registrar's office ought to be also.
So moved.
I think we, that was asked.
Tonight?
We don't need it.
And I don't believe, she said we didn't need that.
I mean, it doesn't hurt to do it, but we don't need it. It's not an urgent rush because we had to file the paperwork's filed. We're waiting for the agreement to come back.
Okay. We'll let it ride. We'll let it ride then.
Motion withdrawn.
Resolution TC 30-14. May I have a motion to read the title of this bond resolution, Board of Education Capital Improvement Bond Resolution in its entirety, and to waive the reading of the remainder of the resolution, incorporating its full text into the minutes of the meeting? Mr. Marsh, thank you.
Second.
We're in a time warp. Okay. I think, Mr. Marsh, did you? Martian Cologne, thank you. No, 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 don't yield anything. It's done. Thank you. All in favor? Is that unanimous consent? Yes, it is? Okay. Okay, then let's, thank you. Let's read Resolution TC 30-14. Ms. Guardiano, would you do that, please?
Certainly. Resolution TC 30-14, be resolved that a resolution entitled, "Resolution Appropriating $5,625,000 for the Trumbull Board of Education Capital Improvement Plan, 2024-2025, and authorizing the issuance of $5,625,000 bonds of the town to meet said appropriation. Impending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings for such purpose, full resolution attached."
Thank you very much. This is a lengthy committee report. Can we unanimously agree not to read it? Yes, thank you. We have Mr. Dave Cody with us.
Good evening. David Cody, Director of Operations for the Board of Ed, for those new council members. I'm here to ask you to support the bonding for mainly three projects for the Board of Ed, one being Middlebrook Elementary HVAC project, the second being the Booth Hill roof replacement project. And then there's two projects at Trumbull High, one being the field that we've heard a lot about tonight and as well as a design study for the parking and circulation around the building and as well as drainage and flooding issues up there.
Thank you. So I think, believe the council is aware that the resolution amount is the amount that was approved by the Board of Finance. They increased the original amount by 400,000. So, Mr. Cody, just a couple of quick questions. These projects associated with this bond, will they all go forward and be constructed or substantially constructed in this calendar year?
With the exception of the Middlebrook HVAC project, that is subject to a state grant, a special state grant that the governor and the legislature enacted last year. They've given us two calendar years to get that work done, and we'll need it because there'll be quite a bit of work to get done in a summer. There won't be any possibility to get it all done in one summer. We expect long lead times on some of the equipment. But the roof project, yes, definitely. And the field project, yes.
So any questions on either the roof project or the HVAC project? Mr. Sento?
Hi, Mr. Cody.
Hi.
Hey, just a follow-up on the Booth Hill one. This goes through, we'll be ready to go for the summer, you believe?
The roof project?
Yeah, for Booth Hill.
Yes, we have our plan completion review at the end of the month with the state, and that will give us permission to go to bid.
Okay. Because we haven't had a meeting.
Right.
So I just wanted to add that.
We plan to have one next week, by the way.
Oh, okay. Thanks.
So let's talk about the McDougal Stadium project. There was a recommendation for a million eight that was increased the Board of Finance level to the 2.2 that's in our resolution. And there's some conversation that the 2.2 will not completely restore the McDougal Stadium issues.
That's correct. There's some items, and for the sake of trying to get through this bond year with, you know, our capacity, that we scaled back to try and get the minimum that we felt needed to be done. At the time, we were estimating a portion of the project, and it came back after we, after Mr. King consulted with the vendor, that it was, it needed to be increased by that 400,000. So 2.2 million will get us from the track in. That includes the area Ds, which are at the end zones, as well as the field and a new rubberized track.
What does it exclude?
It excludes some paving around the fields. It excludes that concrete wall that they've been talking about as far as the lacrosse practice and some new fencing around the track as well as around the field, the stadium itself.
And what's the additional cost for the items?
It was just under $3 million.
Total project would be just under 3 million?
Correct, sir.
Mr. Marsh?
Mr. Cody, through the chair. Is it intended that the items that are not being done in this bond cycle will be done in the next bond cycle?
We'd certainly be back requesting funds for it, yes.
So it's not that they've been removed from the project without intention to complete them. It's just for bonding purposes, you're doing what you can do this year, and then next year you'll come and ask for?
Well, we think we could get it all done this year, but we, you know, for...
For $3 million, sure, yeah.
But for, you know, financial sake, you know, we're only asking for the 2.2.
Understood. Thank you.
Yep.
So just to be perfectly clear for everyone in our discussions with Dr. Semel, with Mr. Cody, and Mr. King, at some point during the conversations, when the additional $400,000 was asked for, it was made clear that next year we would finish this project. We are not saying that we do, that the town does not, or I don't, I shouldn't say the town, I don't want to speak for anyone, does not support these additional items for this field.
Through the chair.
Guardiano?
Maria, can you just share, or Vicki or whomever, what we traditionally bond or the range that we bond for the Board of Education projects? If you have that. Just to give some indication of what figure we are historically looking at.
I believe the last two bond issues between 4 million and 5 million that we've been borrowing.
2022 was 3 million.
Yep.
What was that, Mr. Cody? I'm sorry.
September 2022 was only 3 million.
So the, what are we looking at? 5.6 this year is higher than previous? And so if we're looking at the potential for another 800,000, we're looking at 6.4 million? Okay. Almost double, or will double what we did in '22, '23?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Wick?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Cody. At the Board of Finance meeting literally a couple of weeks ago, the Board of Ed asked for 2.2 million for this year. And there's a process to be followed, right? You go to Board of Finance, and then you come to Town Council. So my question is, is there anything that as of December 14th, the Board of Ed did not know that today they do know with respect to these costs? Did anything change over the past couple of weeks?
No, nothing's changed.
Thank you.
Ms. Satin and then Mr. Sento?
Hi, thank you. Regarding the wall and the lacrosse wall and the fence, are there any imminent safety issues that anybody should be concerned with regarding those areas?
There is a concern, especially with the fencing work, and we were going to look at other ways of trying to accomplish it. But the fence closest to the track may disturb the track when it comes time to put a new fence post in along that line, yes. But the rest is pavement, and that can be done at a different time. I'm not exactly sure where the wall is. I'd have to defer to Mr. King.
Regarding, I'm sorry. The fence regarding safety again, does that, is there any?
Well, the fence is...
Is that what it's?
It's in disrepair. We constantly keep up with it, but, you know, it wasn't a very high-quality fence when it was put in. We'd like to see a much beefier fence line because it gets a lot of use.
So nothing imminent regarding safety going on?
Not that we don't deal with on a regular basis.
And the wall, you're...
Well, the wall is a new feature completely, and it's for the benefit of the teams to use for practice. So it's not something, I guess they're using a wall somewhere. I'd have to defer to Mike as to what they're doing right now.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. King.
Mike King, Director of Athletics for the Trumbull Public Schools. Answer your question about safety. Presently, there are two fences that we're speaking about. One surrounds the track, and one is the exterior fence to enter the stadium. The fence that is closest to the track, by code, is supposed to be three feet off the exterior of the track. And we're not, we're much closer than three feet, depending on where you measure different parts of the track. Part of this job would be to move that fence, when possible, to that three-foot National Federation of High School standard.
And that part of the fence is not, we're talking, when we're talking fence, we're talking both these fences are not included in this proposal, correct?
They're not part of the 2.2. They were part of the original 3 million.
So I'm clear on the fencing code issue. The fence was code compliant when it was constructed back in 1974. You're not saying that there's, that the state or some other governing body is telling you the fence has to be replaced immediately, correct?
Nobody, correct.
When it's replaced, it has to comply with code.
Right. Nobody has informed us that we have to do that, correct?
Mr. Vorman, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. When we think about breaking up this project into two pieces, are there downsides to that, breaking it up in terms of either the quality of the end result or additional costs associated with the second so-called phase of that project?
I'm unsure about the cost. I don't think there would be additional cost, but we haven't gotten that far with the different vendors. So that would have to be further explored. If there is a cost discrepancy, you know, relocation, you know, doing it twice and bringing equipment out, that's a possibility. But for example, the cost and potentially the cost of the fencing of the wall could go up in a year with inflation. But, you know, we haven't actually requested those numbers. I'm not sure that companies would give us a quote 18 months out. I think it'd be hard for them to tell us what the fair market value of, you know, the fencing would be. And then regarding the downside to it, first, there would probably be a period of time where we would have to close the facility to the public or to our activities for two summers instead of one. This summer, if this project gets approved, we're looking at shutting down the facility from mid-June to mid-September. Next summer, if we're doing the inner fence at a minimum, there'd be some shutdown to using the field while that work is being done. Once that inner fence is put in, we could probably reuse the field safely while they're doing work outside of the fence. And then there would be some concern about the quality of work in terms of matching up the asphalt to the track and whether you're going to have a seam there, and if over time, water's going to cause cracking and that rather than one seamless piece of asphalt. And then you're talking about drilling holes to put poles in right next to our brand-new track and then paving around that rather than putting the sleeves in and paving all at one time. I think would be the biggest concerns about breaking it up.
Mr. King, what is the total project cost? Is it 3 million? Is it 2.8? What are your best numbers at this point?
Overall, to do the whole thing that was initially proposed is $3 million.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Guardiano?
Through the chair. Dave, you said, when Councilman Satin asked a question, you said something about disturbing the track. I think you just referenced a little bit about what that would be. But can you be really clear what, if this was done in two phases, what does disturbing the track in Phase 2 look like?
We'd have to dig new holes for the posts, for the fencing. And I'd be concerned that it'd be in the location close to the track that it would impact the rubber surfacing. That would be a concern. We'd have to really look at that carefully as to how we can do it.
Right. So what I'm trying, I know that last week, Mr. Sento asked a question about the HVAC at the school. And, right, we've done the roof. Is the HVAC going to ruin the roof? And the answer was, no, we are going to have to cut into it, but it's okay. This is common. Is this common? Are we in a situation of equivalent of HVAC? Or are we ruining something that we put 2.2 million into? That's what I think we all need to understand because there's no point putting money in and then ruining it. But we're also looking at potentially doubling the bonding from this year, and so we need to be really careful about that.
I think if anything, if we could get the additional funding for the interior fence this year, that would help a long way to protect that we wouldn't be disturbing the work that's being done.
And what does that cost? What does interior fencing cost?
I think it was $117,000 for the interior fence.
Of the 800 additional thousand, the interior fence, and so the remaining 600 and change, is the exterior fence and the paving?
It's exterior fence, paving, and the concrete wall.
And the wall.
And a thicker pad below the surface of the field.
The estimate for the interior fence is $141,260. Try to put them in our fence.
I'm sorry, I misquoted.
The $117,000 was for the wall. So that's the number he put out there. It's $141,000 for the interior fence, which is the one right around the track.
Mr. Maccas?
Yep. More follow-up. So these are good questions. The wall, so $114,000, you said?
$117.
Okay. And do you know the exact location and placement of where that would be?
Yes. So if you enter the stadium from the ramp coming out from the Coach's Parking Lot, it'll be to the right where the old shot put throwing areas as you walk towards Stroll Road.
So, okay. So that would be in the grass area to the right. And if that were to be installed in a subsequent time, right after the track and any fencing, should we consider that? Is that going to be an issue with bringing equipment and going over a track with whatever you use to erect a wall like that in that location?
The only issue I would see, and maybe they would just take a section of fence out. If we did the new, if we just put asphalt on that ramp, we may not want to take heavy equipment up that ramp and turn right into that field. But perhaps they could take apart a section of fence and bypass that issue. That's the only issue I would see about separating those.
Mr. Dorsey?
And if we added the $141,000? It was 140,260? $141,260? 141?
Yep, 141,260.
Would that impact the timing of these, of the construction? Would you be able to get everything done by, I think you said, mid-September if we added the interior fence?
Yes, we could get the job done in its entirety by the middle of September if the weather's good. They've warned us, you know, 12 to 14 weeks is the estimated timeline for this project. So we don't know when we would begin because we don't know when graduation will be.
Okay.
It depends on snow days. But the idea would be to start as soon after graduation as possible. And we're assuming mid-June.
Is it possible to make a motion to add funds now? Or is it, do we have to go through the vote? Is it possible to make a motion to add, to add funds now or is it, do we have to go through the vote?
You can make the motion now would be appropriate. Sorry? Are you making a motion?
I would like to make a motion to add 141,260 to the McDougal Field Construction for Interior Fencing.
We have a second. Mr. Lemoine? Discussion, Mr. Marsh?
Just out of curiosity, and I don't, I don't know if Mr. Cody has the answer or this is a Dr. Semel question, but is there any money in the non-lapsing account that could be used towards that 141,000 so we don't have to bond it?
I can't speak to Dr. Semel on that.
Maria? I would be in favor of that, but again, a bigger discussion.
Maria just said approximately 400,000. I just want to make sure because she's sitting in the corner, not on mic. Through the chair, I would ask for a five-minute recess at this point.
Okay, we'll recess five minutes.
Thank you.
All right, we're back from recess. We'll continue with the discussion on this resolution for the Board of Education bonding. Mr. Dorsey, you have some questions?
I'm actually, after discussion, I'm going to withdraw my motion for the 141,260.
All right, and the second is withdrawn as well, okay? So we have the resolution back on the floor. Is, are there further questions for Mr. Cody or Mr. King? Mr. Wolf?
Yeah, this question's probably for Mike. I would love it if you would, I know one of the questions came up about safety. I want you to talk a little bit about the current fence that's not three feet away. And I'd also love you to talk about, you know, the, we're expanding into the D pads, which is one of the expenses, but maybe your opinion on mistakes that were made maybe 10 years ago and what we're trying to do differently specifically for safety, whether it's the D pad area or the walkway area.
So specifically in regards to the D zones, the D zones are the area behind the end zone inside the curve of the track, which makes the letter D. That was supposedly eliminated or cut 11 years ago when they did the project. When I spoke with Mr. Herbst, my predecessor, he said that was supposed to be done and with lack of funding, they cut that part of it out. By fixing those, right now, we have a huge elevation difference between the field and the D zone. And we have in those D zones, your, your long jump pit. That's where the high jumpers jump and that's where the pole vaulters jump. And we have, it's a grassy area which is uneven. We have an elevated runway for the long jump and for the pole vault where the track material is in bad shape and missing in other spaces and areas. So fixing that D zone will, you know, from a safety perspective, would rectify those concerns. It's also going to provide a lot of drainage for the field that we presently don't have, which is why some of the cost is so exorbitant for those, to fix those two D zone areas. In regards to your question about the fencing, you know, depending on where you are on the track, sometimes the fencing is very close to the edge of the track and in other areas, it's further away. The goal would be when we, if we someday replace that fence, would be to make it as compliant as possible to get those three feet. And that's going to be a challenge right in front of the bleachers. We can get closer to the three feet, but we're not going to be able to get the three feet. On the curves on the outside of the D zone, we would, there's plenty of space to get that to where it's supposed to be. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to correct some information. The non-lapsing account balance, I understand is not 400,000, it's 751,000, is that right, Maria? So there is 751,000 in the Board of Education's non-lapsing fund. And so I think it's probably the spirit of the council to maybe reach out and ask them to use some of that money for this McDougal Stadium project. Is there any other discussion or questions on this resolution? Mr. Foreman?
You know, Chris, we spent a lot of time talking about, you know, lifecycle of the bond relative to the lifecycle of the project. And when I think about this project, Mike, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but there's a lot that's going into the improvement of the landscape, right? Fixing the D zones and some of that sort of thing. And true, those improvements, whether it's the track or the pavement or the fences, those things last a very long time. And even the pad underneath the track, underneath the turf lasts a very long time. It's really just the carpet itself, so to speak, on top, that is the shortest-lived piece of the project. Is that, would that be right?
Correct. So the carpet has about an eight-to-10, 12-year life cycle. You have a, receive a standard eight-year warranty and then you hope to get about 10 years out of it and if you're lucky, a little more. The pad that goes underneath that usually has a 25-year life cycle, so two, usually use it for two of the carpets. So the second time you roll out that carpet, you don't need to buy the pad that goes underneath it. After that, you'd need to replace that. You know, we just got approximately 50 years out of the fencing. So if we replace the fencing, we'd hope to get, you know, a lengthy period of time for that. And then you, the track itself, you would hope to get like two cycles of turf field out of it, like 25 years or, you know, 20 to 25 years.
Okay, excellent. And then regarding the pad that goes underneath the turf, presumably is that a higher quality or safer? Must be safer than what was put down 10, 15 years ago.
Presently, there is no pad under the field that we have right now. There's no pad at all in McDougal Stadium right now. And that is put there for two purposes. The primary purpose is for safety and cushion and reduce injuries. The second is to assist in drainage.
Okay. So it's not up to that standard at this point for safety? Or it is, but it could be better?
The pad is for safety, no doubt the way to go.
The pad would come with this project, yes.
That's part of the pricing of, that would be included in the 2.2 or the 3 or, yes, that's built into that.
Any other questions, discussions? Mr. Boswell?
Mike, so if you get the 2.2 million and then use the remainder out of the lapsing fund, right? That would give you everything that you need. So fast forward 10 years from now, if you were still here and you came back to the council, you'd probably only be looking for 800,000 roughly just for the turf because everything else would be brought up to speed. So moving forward 10 years from now, we're talking a third of the price. It would just be the turf replacement.
Correct. Once those other things are done, the lifespan is much longer. And you know, what the price will be 10 years from now with inflation, I can't say. But yeah, it would be that $800,000 portion of the project.
Nothing further? Okay, I'm going to ask the clerk to call the roll to vote on Resolution TC 30-14. Madam Clerk?
Mike Boswell.
Yes.
Mary Isaac.
Eric Story.
Yes.
Bill Meca.
Yes.
Ann Sather.
Yes.
Jennifer Winchell. Veronica Lenzin.
Yes.
Richard Wolfe.
Yes.
Jason Marsh.
Yes.
Anthony Dorsey.
Yes.
Ashley Guardiano.
Yes.
Carl Masaro.
Yes.
John Foreman.
Yes.
Joe Piffco.
Yes.
Scott Wick.
Yes.
Joy Cologne.
Yes.
Steven Lemoine.
Yes.
Kelly Malazi.
Yes.
Tony Cento.
Yes.
Kevin Shively.
Yes.
And Nicole Zen.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. The bond resolution is adopted. We'll move on to our final item, Resolution TC 30-15. Is there a motion and a second to read the title of the Town Capital Improvement Bond Resolution in its entirety and to waive the reading of the remainder of the resolution incorporating the full text, its full text into the minutes of this meeting? Scottianna? Second. Ms. Cologne? All in favor? Is that unanimous consent?
Yes.
Yes, it is. Thank you. Ms. Cologne, will you move the resolution to the floor, please?
Certainly, Mr. Chairman. Resolution TC 30-15, be it resolved that a resolution entitled Resolution Appropriating $12,575,000 for the Trumbull Town Capital Improvement Plan 2024 to 2025 and authorizing the issuance of $12,575,000 bonds of the town to meet said appropriation. Impending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings for such purpose is hereby approved. Full resolution attached.
Thank you. We have a second. It's Malazi, thank you. Committee report is lengthy. Can we waive that reading by unanimous consent? Yes, we can. Thank you. It's unanimous. Mr. Estrada? This is your baby tonight. The song I wrote.
The, I am here to ask questions. If you have questions of anything specific, earlier I passed out to the council the, the front end of the package that was received from the Finance Department that had the narrative on each of the projects that I think, I'm sure many of you have already seen. But if there are any specific questions beyond that, I'm here to attempt to answer.
Guardiano?
Through the chair, I feel like let's jump right into the field because ultimately, we're going to end up at the Indian Ledge Field and so let's not beat around the bush on this one.
Well, let's not, okay? I've prepared something for the council that I think will give you a clear picture of the project and.
George, you got one for the balcony up here?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, sir.
So we, Dimitri Paris and I have been working on this for some time and we've been in discussions with several manufacturers of artificial surface athletic facilities. So I've, I'm, I've labeled this, what I've given you as Company One and Company Two, just to be fair, because they're two different companies that we've had extensive conversation with. And on the backside of this, if you, if you look, it's the map that I provided you because we've had a lot of conversation over the last couple of months and I'm not sure that everyone's exactly sure what it is that we're talking about achieving there. So it is the actual footprint of the exact field that exists there today. The Engineering Department provided us the snap lines of the, 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 the file lines are at 318 and 320. It gives you the, that gives you an idea of the dimension of the area that we're working with. So what we did was we created a, an estimate of the square footage of that space. And by that square footage, we began the discussions with the two companies so that we can actually try to get apples for apples. Where we've arrived, Company One, although you could see Company One, the turf says 18, 1.8 million. The Company Two, 2.1. But the reason, the difference between that is some of, the Company Two has the backstops and some fencing included in there where we're adding it up on top with the backstop and dugouts, the 150,000. So when you add that in, they pretty much end up at the exact same price. So we, we, we are comfortable that we're getting from two different recognized companies, very close numbers. So we arrive there. What, what we are caring for lighting, that is the recent installation of new lights at the high school softball field. That's, I believe, just completed. And I'm carrying a 10% contingency on both of those proposals because obviously we, there are, there's always the unknown when we start digging and if we hit something that we have to deal with. So in essence, if you go to the bottom, project estimated cost, I'm averaging out the two. It's 2.5 million. We have 700 from ARPA. And I'm, I'm projecting in a $1.8 million need to make this project whole.
Through the chair. George, this is helpful. Can you just explain exactly what this gets us in terms of usage?
Yes, and that's a great question because that's really one of the most important things. And there are those that look at an artificial surface as it's a much more expensive investment. It has a lifespan. What's the benefit of that? The benefit of that is, and for those of you, there's, there are several of you here that are involved in sports in this town. We manage our turf fields, okay, our grass fields carefully so that we don't beat them up to the point where we have to reinvest in them like we just did at one of the fields at the high school where we had to invest $250,000 to put sod down in the irrigation system there. That's why we, we end up having to suspend games, delay or cancel them when the weather doesn't allow for playing on them without destroying them. Because if you play when a field is really saturated, you're basically going to wear it out right away. So Dimitri Paris is adamant about trying to limit the hours of play on any given field. When we look at this, if you look at the square that's on there, and I gave you just some examples of dimensions for girls in, in slow pitch and high school softball, which this field would support, youth soccer, lacrosse, field hockey. The, those, the dimensions on there are approximately the 240 by 160. So this is more youth sports, but the difference here would be that it's sunrise to sunset and beyond. So you can come in here in the morning at, at the break of dawn when you have, when, when we open up the park and you can be playing on there even if it's raining or if it's snowing. So we don't tell you you can't be on the field because of weather. So the usage on here, I can, I can renovate every lawn around the school in, in the town of Trumbull and I couldn't get the same usage that I would get from being able to permit and, and issue time slots on this, on a field like this.
Kind of led into my next question. What is, if this gets approved for the multi-purpose, multi-use, multi-purpose turf field, what is the plan for allocating use among the various user groups?
I would defer that to the Recreation Department that has a system, existing system. So clearly, it, it would be a rotating and scheduling into different entities. You have various organizations that organize the same sport in this town. You have a lot of tournaments. So the, the benefit is that you just have a facility where you can do that on a Saturday and Sunday. You can get 15 hours out of, out of a facility like this if you really push the envelope because you can have, you can have the lights on and you're not affecting a neighbor because you're banking up against the connector. That's the only one that's going to see the lights. So you can be there pretty much, you know, we're never going to allow 24/7, but you can be there 24/7 theoretically.
Mr. Wolf?
I can speak to that because I've been dealing with the scheduling for 10 years. So we have these conversations with Dimitri every single year and I, and I've said, you know, you, for the first time ever, you have presidents of all the major youth sports that are all play nice to the sandbox together. Typically, at the current Indian Ledge Field, the turf field, soccer and field hockey, their seasons are the fall. Lacrosse is the spring. Soccer also plays in the spring. Field hockey still, you know, has clinics in the spring. So typically what happens is the presidents all talk together about their schedules. all talk together about their schedules, and they all give each other windows, even if, like, you typically do the practices for all those three sports, because those are the three major ones, using the current turf. Um, even if you have to split the, the practices where field, field hockey gets half the current turf and Trumbull United gets the other half of the turf, you, you figure out the times, and you're pretty amicable. Um, the games are typically on Saturdays, and when the travel schedules come out, um, you figure it out with your, your counterpart presidents. The soccer, for example, the state rules are to have games between 10:00 AM and 6:00 PM. So lacrosse will try to schedule all their games in the morning, and then soccer will just try to schedule all their games in the afternoon. So it, it, there hasn't been a problem with the, with the current turf. The problem is population. That's, that's since COVID with, with the amount of kids that have moved into the town, I could just speak on, because I'm the president for AYSO. We were typically at 900 to 1,000 kids a, a year, and then since COVID, we went to like 1150, 1250. Now we're over 1,300. I think we had 1,400 last year. And it's primarily in the, the younger age groups, and it's the older age groups that need the turfs, the lights at night. I mean, you wouldn't build this thing without lights, because then you, you, you lose hours. But you, you get usage out of it 10 months out of the year. So that's...
Exactly. And, and usage 10 months out of the year is huge, because we can't arrive at that anywhere on a grass field.
Ms. Malazi, then. Ms. Godiana?
So if I'm looking at this schematic correctly that you gave us, Mr. Estrada, you can theoretically put two youth soccer games or practices at the same time on this field?
No, I, I, I don't believe so. That, that field, what, and the coach would probably be able to explain this better, but I think that you'd probably be able to split it into two that are using half the field for a practice. But you wouldn't, you wouldn't have two games on that, on that facility.
Okay. Thank you.
Scottiana?
Further explanation?
Yeah, so I agree. Practices, absolutely. In fact, practices, I think all the field hockey per age group go at the same time, and you might have the other half of multiple Trumbull United teams at the same time. Games, no, you, you, you couldn't. Two reasons. Uh, first is safety, right? Because field hockey ball is strong, kids launching soccer balls to the other side. So you wouldn't, you wouldn't do that. But number two, you just wouldn't for games, there wouldn't be enough room. But you figure it out. If you've got 10 hours with lights on Saturdays and 10 hours with lights on Sunday, that's, that's huge. That, that, you can get all the games on.
Scottiana?
Thank you. Through the chair. So George, if I'm hearing you correctly, it's that you recommend that we do this option for the field?
I would strongly recommend that you, that you consider it, absolutely.
And so if that's the case, and based off of everything we heard at the ARPA meetings, um, I would make a motion to add, I believe it's the 1.8 million dollars is what you would need?
That's what, that's what I would suggest.
I'd make a motion to add 1.8 million dollars for the purpose of this multipurpose field.
I hear a symphony. Uh, I guess it's Ms. Cologne. Okay. Discussion on the motion. Tony?
I have a question about the field. I had a question for Maria. Is that, can I ask her that now?
Sure.
Maria? Um, normally we bond what we're retiring.
Probably 13 million.
Right. So how much more are we over with this? Is the, um, WPCA taking out of that figure?
Yes.
And then what are we at now, if you do that?
I don't have that figure right now. So we bond between 12 and 13 million a year, and we retire approximately the same amount. Part of that is also WPCA, which pays their debt through the user fees.
So how much are we over the 13 million this year?
Right now, it's at 12,755 right now.
12,755?
Right. That's, that's the resolution.
Oh, but that's not including the, that's school separate?
The school is separate. That's just the town.
So we're about where we normally are, then?
For the town, yes.
Just wanted to double check. Thanks.
Yeah, I, I think the math we're talking about, the resolution is 12,575,000, which is what the Board of Finance sent us. If we subtract 2,345, which is the WPCA portion of this bond, and add the 1.8 back, we're in the area of 11.8 or 9 million for this. Miss Sather?
I have a, I'm sorry, George. I have a quick question for you. In terms of the usage of the field? So when you said, like, you could, I know you would never do 24 hours a day, because that's unreasonable, but what does the, does the town have an idea in terms of what would be the time limit or the curfew for the evening?
Um, I believe currently, and, Mr. Boswell, you may know better. Is it 10 o'clock, 11 o'clock with the, with the field, the softball field?
It's recommended 10 o'clock unless it's a tournament, and then they have some leniency.
Okay.
If it's a sanctioned tournament.
Would we get... If the adult population of the town wanted to use that field, would they be allowed to be later? I know, obviously, for children, it's a more appropriate thing to...
I, I, I would assume everything is open for discussion. I don't, I, I, nothing occurs to me that's, would prevent it. Um, but Dimitri Paris unfortunately isn't here to answer in more detail.
So currently, right now, we don't have coed soft, adult softball, and we don't have men's softball. So those leagues have dissolved, because when the lights, uh, when the lights went out at Indian Ledge and were never replaced, we lost those adult leagues. So now all those residents are playing in surrounding towns. I believe they do still have a men's league, but now that's gone Sunday morning, and then that cuts into little league and softball and whatnot, because they're allocating time that's normally used for, like, Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday night. I would envision that Parks and Rec would bring back coed and men's league softball and have games maybe 7, 8 o'clock, 9 o'clock on a Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday night, because you probably wouldn't have a ton of youth using the lights that late, uh, during the school year.
I have a, go ahead, Mr. Wick.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to speak in favor of the motion with one caveat. And in favor of the motion, because there, there can be really little doubt that youth sports in this town is a big deal. Um, I know three board members in particular that are directly involved in soccer and are going to be excited to use this field, and I imagine there's going to be a lot of youth sports that are going to get a lot of use out of this field. And that comes, there comes the caveat, right? Because I suspect Parks and Rec is going to have their doors knocked constantly to get the use of this field. And it is already an existing softball field. And my one concern is that the kids that play softball there now don't lose their existing opportunity to the extent they play there. So I would just ask the First Electman's Office to work with Parks and Rec if this does get approved, to make sure that the existing softball teams don't lose out on their existing use of that field, because I do think it's going to be used pretty heavily. Thank you.
Mr. Shively?
Thank you. Through the chair. So as somebody who's coached on, coached my daughter on that field, I'm, I'm really glad that we're going to get lights regardless, right? Because we, we got that in the ARPA funds. Um, my concerns going into tonight, and, you know, I was leaning pretty heavily towards not wanting to support this for a couple of reasons. Not because I don't think there's a need for it. I absolutely know there's a need for it. Um, and we've heard that repeatedly, and I, I've heard, I've heard that. Um, but I just wanted to make sure, and this kind of tags on to what Mr. Wick was saying, is that I don't want to get into a situation where we pay 1.8 million dollars more and then find out that we're really not expanding beyond, because we're going to get the, the softball played there, and probably the adult leagues back as well. But I'm concerned about the rugby, the lacrosse, the other, younger, especially the younger leagues that have pretty much nowhere right now, um, to, to play. So, um, are they going to, is there any chance they're going to get squeezed out with the scheduling?
I, I wouldn't, I would expect that they are going to, Dimitri, they do a phenomenal job of getting everyone to work together, as we heard, to accommodate so many, uh, because there really are numerous programs, and they're growing every year. Um, so having a facility like this, it just allows for the growth that's already occurred to support that. But we are going to have to arrive at a point where we start limiting that additional organizations and programs really, we can't support them, because exactly what you just said, you're locking out the people that are already using it, the organizations that are using it. So there will be a tipping point, um, and that, that I think that we're pretty close to. Uh, we're bringing something this online, what it's going to do is provide the relief valve for all of the organizations we have right now that can't get the field time that they need. And we hear that, we hear the outcry every year, um, that, you know, well, we had 15 games scheduled, we had seven that we got in, because the field didn't, you know, we didn't have a field to play on, because it, it was a rainy season. This, this prevents that from happening.
Thank you. And that's the other part, the other new information that you shared with us tonight, which was new to me at least, was the fact that we're getting so much more time use out of the field. That's, that's made me think, kind of second thoughts about my position on this as well.
Absolutely. It dis, dispays the dividends. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Mr. Boswell?
The only thing I'll add to that, to Kevin's point, is it, it is a revenue generator. So when you talk about grass compared to turf, you can be on turf from 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM at night, and every single user of that field is paying between 25 and 125 dollars an hour. So the town is actually making money, where if that was a grass field, to George's point before, it normally has a four-hour cap per day. So let's say Monday to Friday, you can get maybe two to three more hours. Saturday, Sunday, you're looking at gaining six or seven hours every single Saturday, Sunday. Over the course of 10 months, times 10 years of the turf, it, it'll crack into it financially, the expense of it.
And something that I'll tell you that I factored into here is, there is a, a surface that, you heard earlier, Mr. King, speaking of a surface that has an eight to 10-year lifespan. I'm familiar with that surface, because that's what we had at the University of Bridgeport. We did push that out to 12, uh, and it was, and, and at that point, we, we replaced it just for safety reasons, but it's, it hadn't completely deteriorated. But we, we've found that for 50 cents a square foot more with another company, they are estimating a 13 to 15-year lifespan. So again, we start to get a longer return on, on our investment. So, and, and technology will continue to improve. The next time that this has to be resurfaced, hopefully there's one that has even longer lifespan.
Send that company name to Mr. Cody.
I will. I, I promise you, I will.
Okay. Mr., Ms. Malazi?
Forgive me, because I've never been up there for a game, because I don't have any sporty spices, but, um, are there concessions?
No, but there, there are restrooms nearby. Um, the, we...
No, but I'm thinking, because one of the discussions that we had is that bringing additional, um, you know, tournaments and things like that will be good for the businesses in town, which is extremely important. And I know some of the local restaurants have food trucks. Like, would there be anything from preventing them from going up there with their food trucks?
I have seen food trucks there from time to time when there are large, um, events.
Excellent.
Uh, you also have the BMX across the parking lot from there, which brings in that sort of, um, support for their events. So it, it, this is something that can become, um, more, more prevalent.
Excellent. Thank you.
And that Whitney Avenue corridor also has all of those new eateries. So I think that having more activity there is just going to expand that commercial district's opportunities.
Miss Ann?
Hi, George. Um, parking, do you foresee with, with more usage going on up there, more, um, more playtime up there, do you foresee any issues with parking?
No, not at all. Um, I, I hope all of you take the time to, to, um, do a ride through the park. Um, we've, through the support of the council, the Administration, Board of Finance, we've made some incredible improvements up there. Um, so the parking areas are, for the most part, complete, repaved and restriped. We have ample parking up there. So I, I think that that's the one thing that we really are in good shape on.
Shall we vote on the motion?
Can I start one sentence?
Yes, Mary?
Mary Isaac? Sorry, I was waiting for a minute to get through. Um, I was leaning against it, the 4,700, because I definitely couldn't see the lights up there, reconfiguring the field, so multiple users can be on it. But I was against the grass. I obviously understand there's a lot more usage that can get in there because of turf. But George, um, I, when you were talking about the hill crest field, how often is a field, does it have to be pulled off and started and vet processed? Is that something that happens every few years? Is it something that is, you know, it's, because it obviously can't get as much use as a turf, but the general field can be telephoned if that happens, what's across?
Mary, I think, I think you're asking about the maintenance to a field like this?
Grass field?
Yes.
Yes. The, the normal maintenance cycle for one of these fields is annually, um, and they come in and they do a safety inspection. They're basically looking and examining the seams, because this comes in in massive carpet rolls, um, that are then, um, bonded together. So they do an inspection for any tears in that surface. Um, and they have a grooming, um, machine that's pulled by a small tractor that basically redistributes that, um, that, that fill that's in between that, the grass, what looks like grass, and it basically redistributes what's there, and it, and, uh, so, so the maintenance is minimal. Um, it's a maintenance contract, uh, but we do that, we, on the existing field now. Uh, so I don't, I don't foresee that being a tremendous, um, issue.
Yes, I'm sorry. Um, I, I meant for the grass itself.
The grass field at Hillcrest?
Like, what is...
She's asking for the cost of maintaining a grass field, like the one at Hillcrest.
I don't have, I don't know a number for that. I can get that for you.
Do you get that, Mary? He doesn't have a number for that.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. Um, okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. I'm going to ask the clerk to call a roll on the motion to amend by adding $1,800,000 to this resolution.
Mike Boswell?
Yes.
Mary Isaac?
Sorry, I'm going to pin out.
Eric Story?
Yes.
Bill Mecca?
Yes.
Anne Sather?
Yes.
Jennifer Winchell?
Yeah.
Veronica Lenzen?
Yeah.
Richard Wolf?
Yes.
Jason Marsh?
Yes.
Anthony Dorsey?
Yes.
Ashley Godiana?
Yes.
Carl Masaro?
Yes.
John Foreman?
Yes.
Joe Bivka?
Yes.
Scott Wick?
Yes.
Joy Cologne?
Yes.
Steve Almoin?
Yes.
Kelly Malazi?
Yes.
Tony Sinto?
Yes.
Kevin Shively?
You talk to me and do it, George. Yes.
Nicole San?
That amendment passes. We now have the resolution on the floor as amended in the amount of 14,375,000. Do you agree with that, Maria?
Okay, the bonding reservation was for 12,575. You added 1,800, but I also had to change the bonding cost to an additional amount. Anyway...
How much is it? What's the additional amount for the bonding cost?
It's not a material, but it's 14,395 as a full. We, uh, resolution should be 14...
Another 20,000.
14,395.
Mr. Marsh?
I propose an additional amendment to the resolution to add, that's weird, to add $300,000 to put back the splash pad that the Board of Finance removed from the one-year capital plan. And the reason why I suggest this is, um, in order to complete the project in a timely manner, uh, it's better to have it in the bond, in the capital plan than paid through the general fund.
Just, just to clarify, if I could...
Later. Okay. Okay, all right. So we have the three, motion and a second to add 300,000 back to the bond for the splash pad up at Tashawaka Pool. Discussion, questions, comments?
Yeah, Mr. Chair. I would just add, we've spun our wheels over and over on this pool, and I think if the recommendation from the first selectman or from George is that we need to get this in to be able to bid it and do it, then we just need to add it in to bid it and do it, because I, I believe we can still get this done in time for the summer. George, is that still the, the belief?
I, I wouldn't expect that we'll have it done for the summer. We would interrupt the, the summer season. But the, the importance here is being able to award it and locking the price. We bid this in, in November, and it, and it came in over budget after we had value engineered it from a year and a half ago, reducing the scope and using the budgetary number, which was the high bid two, uh, two years ago now, which was substantially higher than the other two. And when we bid it, it came in higher than our estimates, and we had very conservative estimates. So what we were, if we can put this 300 in this evening and it's approved, what this allows us to do is go back to the low bidder from the November bid, try to lock him in that he will accept, that he'll hold the number for us, because otherwise, we're going to have to rebid this, and I'm afraid that the number's just going to go again. It goes higher every time we go out.
So what's the timeline, then?
The timeline would be the end of summer, we would be right into it.
The end of summer.
And if we'd work through the fall, and it would be ready completely for the spring.
And the pool as is, is going to make it through the summer?
We, I, I'm an optimist, so yes.
Dare I ask?
They, our guys are tremendous at keeping things going, so I'm, I'm going to say yes.
So we, George, are you saying the splash pad wouldn't be available for this summer season, 2024?
Well, the, the splash pad is integral into the entire development. So the, if, if we, if we have, we can't award without having the funding in place. So if we can get that awarded, even if we negotiate a slight increase or whatever, and we're, we could stay within budget, everything will be ordered in the minute that the season ends, that we close down, uh, you know, let's say September 1st, we'll be able to go right in and start construction. Because some of the items will, the, the splash pad, for instance, will be a long lead item. So, but that doesn't have to come in until after the decks and everything are poured and in place.
So what's the timing of that?
The timing would be, we'd begin immediately after this season's pool time. So the pool will open as it normally does. It, it will close theoretically September 1st, and September 1st, the construction crews will be waiting at the gate to go in and start working on, on that, and it'll give them, if it's a year like this year, they'll have, you know, four or five months of construction that they can get underway before the winter, and then button it up before the following spring for a full renovation completion.
So you're not talking about a, a usable splash pad until 2025? Am I hearing you right?
It's, it, it, it is part of the full renovation of the pool. Right now, you have a, um, a kiddie pool that is, that does not function, it's failed, so you have nothing there right now. So the, the intent here is that when we refurbish the entire pool, it will be renewed, refurbished as new, and instead of that kiddie pool, there will be a splash pad that will be installed in its place. So it's all part of what will happen beginning at the end of the summer.
What's going to be open for this summer season, 2024?
The same as you had last year. We'll, we'll have to keep, and it's in rough shape, so we'll have to continue to maintain that, to keep it going through this season. But the option would be, if we had been able to award because we had the full funding back in November, we would have been in construction right now. And we would have had a chance to be completed with at least substantially complete before this pool season. But I wouldn't risk at this point going into, because the, we're, we have, we have snow expected in two days. From this point on, construction is going to shut down, for the most part, for exterior construction. So we wouldn't be able to begin that until March or April, and then we're cutting it real close with just two months of major renovation on that pool, potentially not being able to be open for the season, and I wouldn't want to risk that.
Malazie, do you have questions? No? Ms. Sather?
Okay, I'm just, because I'm new to here and I, I'm, I'm still learning. We're doing this, it was going to be with ARPA. Is that money still with, like, what, what happens to that money that was, it was going to go to ARPA? What happens to that ARPA money that needs to be spent and allocated by the, I'm just, I'm sorry. I just need some clarification in terms of where the, how, sorry.
It stays, it stays in the unallocated funds. There's 455,000 that have not been allocated to date. So it just stays there until you have a conversation, um, where we have, go through the process that we established last year. I make recommendations, it goes to the Board of Finance, they vote, goes to the Town Council. So, we do a joint, oh, sorry, a joint meeting first, and then it goes to the Board of Finance and to the Town Council. Okay?
All right, we have the motion on the floor to add 300,000 to the bond. We ready to vote? Okay, Madam Clerk, roll call.
Mike Boswell.
Yes.
Mary Isaac.
Yeah.
Eric Story.
Yeah.
Bill Mecca.
Yes.
Anne Sather.
Yes.
Jennifer Winchell. Veronica Lenzen.
Yeah.
Richard Wolff.
Yes.
Jason Marsh.
Yes.
Anthony Dorsey.
Yes.
Ashley Guardiano.
Yes.
Carl Masaro.
Yes.
John Foreman.
Yes.
Joe Pivco.
Yeah.
Scott Wick.
Yes.
Joy Cologne.
Yes.
Steve Lemoine.
Yes.
Kelly Malazie.
Yes.
Tony Sinto. Kevin Shively.
Yes.
Nicole Satin.
Yes.
The amendment is approved. Get my trusty calculator. Although I should just leave it to Maria, because she gives me a better number than I can calculate. It's 14,695 plus.
14 million, 695. We already increased by up to 5,000 dollars. The Bond Council requires that we go up 5,000, that's why it's not a higher amount. So it's 14 million, 695.
14,695, okay. Okay. Further discussion, Mr. Marsh.
One more. I move to further amend the bond resolution to add 100,000 dollars in respect of the Long Hill, uh, actually, construction, the portion of the project that the Board of Finance removed, and Rena can speak to the reason why it needs to be added. Back to the Capitol.
Thank you.
This is an exercise in don't miss a meeting. I was not at the meeting, so I can't really speak to the full discussion. I was, I was homesick. But it was accidentally coded as design funding. The, this is the funding for the green space within Long Hill Green. It is currently under design. There's already money available to us for the design. We're 23% into the design, based on the most recent invoice, which is processing through payment now. Of that initial allocation, that was 100,000 dollar allocation, 48,000 is for design. We're 23% through that design process. We have our next meeting on Monday. We've had a community meeting associated with the design, some of you were there. The balance, the 52,000 that's left, is not enough to implement the full design. We're going to need approximately another 100,000 dollars per StanTech or our consultants on the project. This is the construction on the green space that includes a, a partial stone wall, plantings, grading, and some other elements to be finalized. If we don't need the whole 100,000, we certainly won't spend it, because we do have a little bit of leftover money in the National Fish and Wildlife Grant that's paying for the paver project that was going to start this week, but is delayed due to the coming snowstorm. So that, I will go back to National Fish and Wildlife and see if they're willing to pay for some of the plantings, so that'll save us some money as well. But this is a construction project. It's not a design project at this point that I'm asking for. And if it goes to a supplemental process, those funds, if we ask for the supplemental this year, have to be spent really by June 31st, or is it August? August 31st, they have to be spent by. So the intention is, is not to do the project in this, in the spring, summer, or before school goes back, because it has a negative impact on the businesses. We've done most of our projects in the fall and winter, in that area that is right in front of the businesses, because it's less impactful to their businesses. So it's very difficult to get this project bid, and we would not have, you know, we'd be implementing it during the businesses' time that they feel is most disruptive. So using bond funds, we have a little more flexibility. We can bid it, hold the price, and do the, do the project as we have done over there before, right after school goes back, a few weeks after school goes back.
So are you saying this is construction money?
This is construction money that they took out. It was, it was accidentally coded in one of the paperwork that went out to that committee as design money. This is, this is a construction project. It's the kind of final buttoning up of Long Hill Green. We'll have the light in, the sidewalks in, the paver project finished. This is the green space to, to finalize that area.
Mr. Marsh?
Just so I'm clear, the reason why we, you, you feel that putting it through the bond is so that it can be bid immediately, whereas you can't, you can't bid until you have the funds committed, correct?
Well, it's going to be bid, yes, as soon as the design's finished, we would go to bid.
But you can't wait, you can't wait till you're ready with the design and then ask for a supplemental?
We have to have the money available to go to bid. If we ask for the supplemental now, the supplemental expires to, that supplemental will expire before we want to do the project.
Well, procedurally...
And it is a construction project, yeah.
I'm sorry, procedurally, though, if you got a supplemental now, and you didn't spend it by the time, could the supplemental be extended, or would you have to apply for a new supplemental?
No, we have to apply for a new one.
Thank you.
Mr. Dorsey.
You know, I liken this to discussion we had with the fences at, at, at Metofield. Is this something that we can use ARPA funds for? I don't know when the next discussion would be, but if it's only 100,000, I guess the question is, why can't we use the ARPA funds for this, for this phase of construction?
I, that's not for me to decide, but we need some kind of money that's going to support the construction, that's usable in the timeframe that we need to do the project. So whether it's, I don't...
It has to be allocated by, into this year and spent by '26.
Yeah.
So that's, the question is, if it's 100,000 dollars, and we have 400,000 ARPA funds, is this, you know, we pull 300,000 out for, you know, the bond splash pad, we have 100,000, it's only 100,000, so I say, can we use the ARPA funds?
How long, I, I, my question, and, and it's not up to me to decide, it's, you know, I don't know what that process is, how long it's going to be to take those, that decision, how many other projects are going to be competing for that money? I have no idea of that, me personally. That may be something this group knows more about. But, you know. So...
Rena, just a timeframe on the, on the final design and then going to bid and finishing this project.
Yeah, so, my guess is we'll have the design done by mid-February, and we kind of have, we would like to go out to bid, you know, in March, say. So takes, yeah, we put it out for a month. By the time we go under contract, and then we've scheduled the work for the fall. So I don't, you know, I don't know what this next process looks like.
Okay. Mr. Mecca?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. What's the feedback been like from the businesses thus far with the parts of the project that, you know, have been completed thus far?
Well, I get very good feedback on the improvements in Long Hill Green, and the businesses are well aware that there's additional improvements coming. But they really do want to see the green space finished, so do the residents. I mean, we had a community meeting about it, we've had numerous community meetings about it over the years, and they want to see it eventually buttoned up. So we're trying to, you know, wrap that area up in terms of the improvements, so that, you know, everybody benefits. You know, they, they have a lot of feedback, meaning the businesses, in terms of what they don't want to see there, they don't want their view to their businesses obstructed by new tree plantings. So we're going to do tree plantings, but we're going to try to do them in ways that allow the businesses to be seen, but yet the residents have some shade cover. We're, we're trying to manage everybody's interests there, but I think that the other thing they don't want is for the construction, every year, they're being disrupted over and over again to get different pieces of this. Let's get this thing wrapped up. Because, you know, while we're going to post a sign up that the businesses are open during this construction, it definitely impacts them.
Are you ready for a vote? Seems like it. All right, well, for my money, I would, I would use ARPA or a supplemental. That's my opinion, but, Madam Clerk, please do the roll call vote, 100,000.
Mike Boswell.
Yes.
Mary Isaac. Eric Story.
Yeah.
Bill Mecca.
Yes.
Anne Sather. Jennifer Winchell. Veronica Lenzen.
No.
Richard Wolff.
Yes.
Jason Marsh.
Yes.
Anthony Dorsey.
No.
Ashley Guardiano.
Yes.
Carl Masaro.
No.
John Foreman.
Yes.
Joe Pivco.
Yeah.
Scott Wick.
Yes.
Joy Cologne.
Yes.
Steve Lemoine.
Yes.
Kelly Malazie.
Yes.
Tony Sinto. Kevin Shively.
Yes.
Nicole Satin.
Yes.
I believe that motion carries. Maria, you want to give us a new number? Or do you trust me?
14 million, 795. It's the rounding. The Bond Council needs us to go up to the 5,000, so there was already up to the 5,000.
Through the chair.
Yes.
Well, Maria, Maria, don't walk away. Quick question. While we just put that in here, if the ARPA process moves along, we don't actually have to bond this project, right? We can end up pulling it.
Right.
And putting it in ARPA if the timing works. Because I think it's a, a valid point and something we should look at, but this also covers in case that process doesn't move. So is that correct?
That's correct. Just keep in mind, if the project doesn't go forward, we don't bond. Right now, we're just, you have the authorization to go forward with the project.
Okay, thank you. I think that keeps your suggestion open and on the, on the table.
Thank you.
Not looking over there. Any further discussion on this resolution? Okay, hearing none. We'll vote on the resolution as amended in the amount of 14 million, 795,000. Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Mike Boswell.
Yes.
Mary Isaac. Eric Story.
Yeah.
Bill Mecca.
Yes.
Anne Sather. Jennifer Winchell. Veronica Lenzen. Richard Wolff.
Yes.
Jason Marsh.
Yes.
Anthony Dorsey.
Yes.
Ashley Guardiano.
Yes.
Carl Masaro.
Yes.
John Foreman.
Yes.
Joe Pivco.
Yeah.
Scott Wick.
Yes.
Joy Cologne.
Yes.
Steve Lemoine.
Yes.
Kelly Malazie.
Yes.
Tony Sinto. Yes. Kevin Shively.
Yes.
Nicole Satin.
Yes.
Excuse me, the town bonding is adopted. I don't think I have anything left.
Through the chair. Through the chair. I do have new business that I'd like to introduce at this point.
Okay.
I'd like to introduce a resolution. I'll read it into the record. Resolution TC 30, we can pick whatever number, 16 maybe, be it resolved that Resolution TC 27-89, as amended by Resolution TC 28-9, is hereby further amended to expand the community facilities, building committee membership to 11 members, and be it further resolved that Don Cantafio, being the same, is hereby appointed as the 11th member of said committee.
We don't need a second, we're not voting on it, just hand it up. Thank you.
I guess my question is, if that's submitted and there is a two-thirds vote, does that get added to the agenda tonight? And I would just ask Attorney Shobek for whatever confirmations needed procedurally.
Procedurally, you need a motion first to add that to the agenda. If you get a two-thirds vote in the, in the affirmative, then it can be added to the agenda, and then it would go on for a vote.
So I move we add that resolution, that was just read by Council Migueliana to the agenda.
Thank you. Any discussion on that resolution? Hearing none, a call for a roll call vote?
Correct.
To add to the agenda.
Mike Boswell.
Yes.
Mary Isaac. Eric Story.
Yeah.
Bill Mecca.
Yes.
Anne Sather.
Yeah.
Jennifer Winchell. Veronica Lenzen. Veronica Lenzen. We'll come back. Richard Wolff.
Yes.
Jason Marsh.
Yes.
Anthony Dorsey.
Yes.
Ashley Guardiano.
Yes.
Carl Masaro.
No.
John Foreman.
Yes.
Joe Pivco.
Yeah.
Scott Wick.
Yes.
Joy Cologne.
Yes.
Steve Lemoine.
No.
Kelly Malazie.
Yes.
Tony Sinto.
No.
Kevin Shively.
Yes.
Nicole Satin.
Yes.
And we go back to Veronica Lenzen. Did we lose her?
Sorry, I lost my new button, but no.
Looks like you passed 17 to 14.
Yes. So that resolution is added to the agenda. Skonian, would you bring it to the floor, please?
Certainly, I will reread it, and shall I just number it 30-16? Okay. Resolution TC 30-16, be it resolved that Resolution TC 27-89, as amended by Resolution TC 28-9, is hereby further amended to expand the community facilities, building committee membership to 11 members, and be it further resolved that Don Cantafio, being the same, is hereby appointed as the 11th member of said committee.
We have a second. Ms. Malazie, thank you. Discussion? I think we all know what it's about. Mr. Marsh?
Just echoing that, I think we've discussed at length the, certainly qualifications of Ms. Cantafio, her longtime service on the committee as a council member, as chair of the, the council, and the precedent that was established with the courtesy and respect afforded to former councilman Chase. So I would ask my colleagues to support this motion.
Mr. Wick?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to speak in favor of the motion. I would have voted in favor in any event, but then listening to the chair of the committee speaking earlier about how it now seems to be that the heavy lifting of this committee is about to begin, having an extra committee member that has experience on the committee makes even more sense now than when we met at 7:30, so I urge us all to vote in favor of it. Thank you.
Anything further? I would add that there's a lot, a lot of past precedent in terms of council members being building committee members, and whether they've been added on through expansion or not, it has cut both ways. I have indicated, in voting as we did earlier tonight, that I would take under consideration where the project goes from here and determine whether there is a need. In the past, when I've made similar complaints about my party members not being added, I've been told various things, but giving opportunity to new volunteers is one of the answers that I've always been given, and that's what the council has chosen earlier this evening. So I will call for a roll call vote. Madam Clerk?
Mike Boswell.
Yes.
Mary Isaac. Eric Story.
Yeah.
Bill Mecca.
Yes.
Anne Sather.
Yes.
Jennifer Winchell. Veronica Lenzen.
No.
Richard Wolff.
Yes.
Jason Marsh.
Yes.
Anthony Dorsey.
Yes.
Ashley Guardiano.
Yes.
Carl Masaro.
No.
John Foreman.
Yes.
Joe Pivco.
Yeah.
Scott Wick.
Yes.
Joy Cologne.
Yes.
Steve Lemoine.
No.
Kelly Malazie.
Yes.
Tony Sinto.
No.
Kevin Shively.
Yes.
Nicole Satin.
Yes.
Resolution passes. Is there any further business?
Mr. Chairman, I would suggest a motion for executive, for emergency legislation due to the fact that portion of the, of the resolution expands the committee, so that in order for Ms. Cantafio to take a seat on the, on the commission, on the, on the building committee more quickly, emergency legislation would be appropriate.
Second.
Any discussion? Can the emergency legislation be adopted by unanimous consent?
No.
No, okay. We'll do a roll call.
Mike Boswell.
Yes.
Mary Isaac. Eric Story.
Yeah.
Bill Mecca.
Yes.
Anne Sather.
Yes.
Jennifer Winchell. Veronica Lenzen.
No.
Richard Wolff.
Yes.
Jason Marsh.
Yes.
Anthony Dorsey.
Yes.
Ashley Guardiano.
Yes.
Carl Masaro.
Yes.
John Foreman.
Yes.
Joe Pivco.
Yeah.
Scott Wick.
Yes.
Joy Cologne.
Yes.
Steve Lemoine.
Yes.
Kelly Malazie.
Yes.
Tony Sinto. Kevin Shively.
Yes.
And Nicole Satin.
Yes.